Cause you can't love until you love through. All that's hurt you, it didn't deserve you. Tried to destroy you. Tell me why would you deny my place? And do all you could to erase everything you...
This is Nesci, this is Carol Bryant with the city of Newport Beach. We're here to talk about parking in the Balboa Village. The Balboa Village undergoing a significant revitalization. And part of that is to better manage our parking. So Carol's going to introduce you to the new parking meters that we've installed. And I want to talk to you about the overall parking in the commercial area.
Hi, I'm Carol Bryant. And I wanted to talk to you about our pay stations that we've installed in many of our lots throughout the city. Hopefully it makes it easier for people to pay and more convenient. From now on, you don't have to worry about a meter number. It's just a pay by plate. So you will need to know your license plate when you come up to the machines to enter. You can pay with cash, credit card. We also have a pay by phone option through ParkMobile.com. There's several options for you. You can use hourly rates or daily rates. In the Balboa Pier parking lot, you can park 24 hours. And this would allow you to do things like go to Catalina. You can park up to seven days and pay at the pay station. The other lots, some of them have limited times, like two hours or six hours. We also offer on our ParkMobile app that you can extend your time without ever leaving your towel on the beach. You can just plug in your telephone app and never have to walk back, never have to leave the restaurant, whatever you're doing, you can continue your fun.
So this is the Balboa Village commercial core. And we have specifically changed the rates in this area because the idea is we really want a greater turnover of parking. So if you're coming for just a couple hours to enjoy some of the commercial areas here for a restaurant or buying something, here is where is your best opportunity to park. And the idea is the turnover is so great, there will be ample parking available. If you're staying for greater than two hours, or if you want to stay for a whole day, or even overnight, the Balboa parking lot, the Pier parking lot, is the location for you to park. And that area is actually cheaper too. So it's perfect.
Whenever you're ready, Mayor.
I'll call the October 13th, 2015 study session of the Newport Beach City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay. First item of business is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Muldoon?
On the consent calendar for...
Clarification, anything, any clarified?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Duffy? Councilmember Curry?
No.
Councilmember Piattar?
None.
Councilmember Petros?
No.
Mayor Protem Dixon?
No.
And I have none. We have two plaques for presentation for outgoing commissioners today. One was for Larry Tucker. Unfortunately, he's had a family emergency and he can't be here today. But our second one is for Hugh Logan from the Civil Service Board. Hugh, are you here? He's not here either. Okay. Well, we'll put these aside then. Okay, so we'll move on to item number three, which is the John Wayne Airport Flight Discussion. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers and members of the audience, I'm going to give a presentation about the FAA and NextGen. I'm going to try to go through it pretty quickly so that, because I know that a number of people in the audience are here just for this item and will want to chime in on some things. So first, there are two issues that I'm going to talk about tonight. One involves a Mag, called MagVar, involves the magnetic pole variation. Talk a little bit more about that. The other is, and I'll spend most of the presentation about NextGen. There are going to be people in the audience who are here because of MagVar who think it's NextGen. There are two different issues, and I say that very respectfully. The NextGen has to do with three new departure procedures, and I'll go over each one of those, and then I'll talk about our options. So here are the two separate issues. MagVar is affecting flights right now. NextGen a flight affects flights that haven't even been flown yet in 2016 and 2017. If you're here because flights are going over my head now and I don't want them there, that's MagVar. And that involves runway headings that were given a new numeric designation in September of 14. The runways didn't move, but what happened where the departure, the standard instrument departure plates were redone, and we think there was an error in them that moved flights too far to the west. There are two corrections. The FAA has told the county that they're working on corrections, that one of them was supposed to be the 17th of September, the other the 15th of October. We're not sure if any of those corrections are going to fix it yet, but we'll keep working on it. So if, if you're here for MagVar, please join in the public comments, but know that it's different from NextGen. NextGen again, and the planning for this is underway. It's a nationwide effort. It involves narrow departure paths that are more precise. And I'm going to talk about this, they're going to be likely aligned with what's, we call the current Strel departure. So I'll go over more of these here in just a moment. Let me get back to the MagVar. These are what the plates look like. If you're a pilot, little, little bit hard to understand what a pilot goes through, but basically, this is John Wayne Airport. This tiny little thing here is John Wayne Airport. You go out at a 196 heading, and then you make either, you start to make a turn somewhere. We think there's an error either in where the turn is occurring, or with this heading right here, the 177 versus the 175. So we're not pilots, we're allowing the FAA and the county to work on this to try and change it. But this is where we think the error is, known as MagVar. So these are plates that are being flown right now. But I'm going to jump to NextGen right now. NextGen again is something happening nationwide. Its goal is to improve safety, save time and fuel. And when we talk about the metroplex, the metroplex is managing NextGen above our cities. So there is a Southern California metroplex that involves all 23 airports, including John Wayne. And talk about one more definitional thing, you'll hear me talk about non-RNAV routes and RNAV routes, known as area navigation. There are two routes being flown now, which are non-RNAV, so they're more imprecise, there's more variation. They'll fly in slightly different areas. There's one big RNAV route that about half the flights are flying now, and it's called the Strel. What's proposed by the FAA is to do three new departure patterns, all pretty closely aligned to the Strel, to replace the Muscle 7 and the Channel 2. They're precise, they're repeatable, they're consistent, they're narrow. So just to give you an example, this is what a non-RNAV Muscle departure looked like in 2012. You could see the greenish-yellow lines here. You can see how much variation there is. Over the peninsula, there's almost a full mile of variation in where these flights would have gone, yet they're all flying what's known as the Muscle. This is what the Channel 2 looks like in July of 12. This is also an non-RNAV departure, so it has more variation. You can see it's going over a whole bunch of different places, goes over the island and a bunch of different places, goes over the peninsula again in about a little bit less than a mile difference variation. You can see one plane went way off there. This is what the Strel looks like. So this is an RNAV departure. I'm going to jump back and forth real fast. Non-RNAV, RNAV. It gets very isolated, you could see, because it's more, it's more computer driven, it involves GPS, more technology in the cockpit. The variation over the island and over the peninsula is much narrower. And the variation here is a little bit narrower. Again, you can kind of see going back and forth, non-RNAV, RNAV. Several years ago, we worked with the county and to develop what might be an ideal departure path out of the bay. And that's on the left-hand side here. You could see it, it nails, goes in between the noise monitors. These are monitors 1, 2, and 3, 4, 5, and 6, and it goes right over 7. Its goal is to avoid populated areas, especially in the upper bay. So by the time it leaves the Newport Dunes area, however, it does start to go over population. It goes over Balboa Island, goes over the peninsula. Arguably, they're about, they're at about 3,000 feet here by the time they go over the Balboa Island. This is the ideal path set alongside the Strel. You see it's fairly close to what the ideal path is. However, the Strel is taking things a little further to the east as soon as it leaves the dunes. And that's in part because the planes are starting to turn to the left. The Strel is flown by planes going east. So think of Dallas, Chicago, Newark, the John Wayne Airport departures that are going east, about half of them do that. So again, a little bit more detail, what's flown today. If you're going to Las Vegas and Salt Lake, you're flying the Muscle. If you're going east, you're flying the Strel, that's an RNAV. If you're flying to San Francisco, Oakland, Portland, Seattle, you're doing the Channel 2, and that's not an RNAV. So what the metroplex is suggesting is that they all go to RNavs, and that these are what the, the new names of them. But basically, they're going to, the, what we, the best we can decipher is that they're generally going to follow the Strel. Strel will have a new name called PIGGON. So real quickly, Muscle turns into Fins, it becomes an RNAV flight. It would start in March of 2017, so it's not being flown today. Again, an RNAV becomes a non-RNAV. This is the map you'd see on the FAA's website. Little, kind of hard to understand what it's doing here above us. This is directly from the FAA's environmental assessment. But basically, it goes out to the Strel and starts to turn. The white line is the proposed path for, in this case, the Fins. The next one is the Strel itself changes to the PIGGON. Not a lot of change for the Strel. We're concerned specifically that the Strel appears to abandon what's called a towing waypoint, which is a waypoint where it flies over the Newport Dunes mound, and then continues out to the Strel, and then it starts to turn. There is an issue that I'm, it's in our comments to the FAA. We would prefer that the Strel waypoint be a flyover, not a flyby. This is a, this is an example of exactly why we want that. It means you go all the way over the point before you start to turn, not, you're just kind of coming by it and you can start to turn. So this gets, this gets the planes out further before they start to turn, either turn to the north or to the west. Or, sorry, to the south. But right now, the Strel itself is a flyby. We're hoping that with this change, it becomes a flyover. Channel 2 to Halo is probably the one that impacts the most people today. It's 40 to 45% of flights. It's a non-RNAV, a wider dispersal going to narrow dispersal in the Halo. The map's basically the same. It doesn't provide us much more information, if any. Again, the preferred, the proposed path is that white line. You could see it really, we really don't know what it's doing over us, except it's following the Strel. So our comment letter, we're concerned that towing is removed, this Newport Dunes mound flyover is removed in each of these maps. We also want the Strel to be a flyover to allow the planes to get further out before they turn. We think we need additional data. And we noted that the theoretical paths won't match actual paths, and that the reduction in dispersion clearly increases the number of flights and potentially noise in some areas. And we asked for a testing period of 180 days once these are implemented. So these are after November of 2016 and March of 2017. A lot of our residents commented as well, the comment period ended on, on the 8th of Just so you know, there is national concern about this. We were, after I think Mr. Petros's column was in the pilot, we were communicated with by a group advocating a no-fly day with, in, in opposition to NextGen generally, and that's coming up on the 24th. Before I conclude, I want to talk just about a couple of things. One is the city council policy A17, which, and this is a snippet from it, it just stresses how much, how much the statutory and law aspects of aviation involve what we do and what we can do. And I thought it was fairly prophetic. They said that if we're, if we as a city are unable to inform our residents about what the legal framework, the constraints of the legal framework, it could lead to unreasonable So what are our options? Well, arguably, you could disperse more. That's the opposite of what NextGen is doing. You could ask for new paths, but that affects new communities, and the FAA clearly doesn't want to do that. And I don't know that we want to do that. The Strel path is an option, but it really does, if, if all the flights go over there, it hammers Balboa Island. A higher altitude departure is an option. That hammers Santa Ana Heights. Because again, if you get higher faster, certainly you know how Santa Ana Heights would impact it. Arguably, the rest of the community is slightly benefited, because you, the planes are higher, faster, the noise is more dispersed. We looked a couple of years ago at a, at a scenario with more turns, two turns in the upper bay. That's still something that might be worth entertaining. We don't know yet if that second turn will add to the noise, say around Harbor Cove or East Bluff, but it's something that I'll talk about that we may want to study. There is a community petition about, out there, you'll hear about it. This is signed by a number of folks across the community, and they argue for four things, that the flight paths need to be fanned. I put in a quote from the city's art study below that, and if, it's a really interesting study, if everyone, anyone wants to read it, it's about departure patterns. And the art study reaffirms that, that a fanning, if its goal is to simply redistribute noise from one impacted area to the other, will not be approved by the FAA. They talk, the petition talks about the takeoff trajectory and elevation needs to be at the highest point possible. That's a fair concern, again, unless you live in Santa Ana Heights. Thrust the engines needs to gear down. That would, I'm assuming they mean when, with time that they've reached the, the altitude to fly over the bay, that it would be quieter, and that makes sense. The, and then they asked for an environmental impact study and report done semi-annually to look at health and safety. And NEPA and CEQA just don't look at it, things like that on a regular routine basis, but it's a fair thing to raise. So here would be my recommendations, and please know that the council policy sticks me with the, and I confer with the city attorney, with Tom Edwards, just about what, to, to help advise you guys as a council about the airport. So it's to continue to work closely with the county to ensure that this MagVar thing is fixed. We, again, we don't know that it, we don't think it's been fixed, even with what may come out in a couple of days. We need to stay at the table with the FAA. Regarding NextGen, advocate for what I, what I listed, but avoid actions that will impact new communities. And then per the art study, the art study suggested in 2008 that we should consider review of departure procedures, including this one called AC9153A. That's the noise abatement procedure that's used now by many planes. That we should study that to see that it represents at all times the optimum procedure. There is a possibility that as planes get more advanced and quieter, that you could do a higher, you could do a different departure procedure that maybe did get planes higher without impacting significantly the folks in Santa Ana Heights. We'd have to be, we'd have to study that first. And then we're not recommending any changes to policy A17. With that, I want, I want to all, as I'll conclude, I wanted to let you know, been talking with the folks on the island, and Lee Pearl, who's here today, provided this to us. And he sent a letter to the FAA. They are advocating for departure paths that go over fewer homes. And you could see in this path, this is towing right here, this is the Newport Dunes mound. This would be the Strel. This is, this would be the line that is flown by half the flights and might be flown by the other half. And what I think Lee and others have talked about is what if some of the planes turned here and some of the planes turned here? And that they would impact not 7,000 people, but 3,000 people. I just bring this to your attention, it's actually not something that I think the FAA would entertain, because it impacts new communities. But I think Lee will speak to that. And with that, I'd conclude and certainly welcome your comments and the public's input.
Okay. Unless there's any comments from council, why don't we open it up to public comment and then have council discussion? Did you have something? Councilmember Petros?
As the, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the Chair of the Aviation Committee, I thought maybe I'd give a little color for the council's benefit, and also update the public on what's transpired since the last Aviation Committee meeting. This has come before us as a reaction by the community to existing issues that are ongoing in the, in the neighborhoods, as well as the anticipation of change resulting from NextGen. At the last two Aviation Committee meetings, we had 100-plus of our neighbors in attendance. So clearly, this is something that has got the attention of those under the flight path. I bring that, and it's very interesting for us to see both MagVar and the NextGen at the same time. Because what we, what you were, what you will hear is, as a result of MagVar, new communities are coming out and saying, hey, I've never heard sounds associated with the airport before, and now I am, and I don't like it. At the same time, those that would be subject to any concentration of air travel would say, I hear it all the time, and I shouldn't be burdened with this any further. Two mutually exclusive and, and understandable outcomes to an insult that we don't have much control over. I want to make that very clear to, to those who are with us tonight. But I want you to understand, kind of setting the table for that. There is, there, I had been instructed by members of the community to follow up and find out what other communities are doing as a result of NextGen. And again, remember, this is happening across the United States, and this is not something the FAA is doing just to John Wayne Airport. As Mr. Kiff explained, the metroplex includes 23 airports systematically planned from Santa Barbara to the Mexican border. So every, like a watch, all of the scheduling and all of the arrivals and departures are thought of in terms of that huge geographical area. We're, we're one part of that much larger piece. And those pieces are occurring across the United States. One community is reacting, and reacting strongly to the FAA and NextGen, and that's the city of Phoenix. So we have been speaking with Phoenix, and Mr. Harp and I have a, a meeting anticipated with the city attorney for Phoenix to understand the details of their complaint against the FAA. But let me tell you what two non-attorneys and non-aviators spoke about when I spoke to the Vice Mayor of Phoenix. When the FAA started their change to Sky Harbor in Phoenix, they were, the community was told that the flights would continue to leave Sky Harbor over the industrial and institutional areas of the city. And that's where NextGen would take them. It would keep going in that direction, and then there would be changes once they left the industrial areas. The community said, okay, I understand that. However, once implemented, the FAA changed that and moved the flights over the residential areas and a lot of the culturally and historically significant parts of Phoenix. That is precisely where we are right now. So in the case of Phoenix, they were told one thing, and they acted in another manner. That's what I have been led to understand from the representatives of Phoenix. So Phoenix decided, well, wait a minute, we have a good case here, we believe, because we were told one thing and you're doing something else. I would also add, when I spoke to the Vice Mayor about this, and said, why do you think you should go up against the FAA and a federal agency? What, what possibly could you get out of this, and how do you think you'll succeed? His response was, well, we're the sixth largest city in the United States, and we believe we've got enough critical mass to at least get their attention. Phoenix, sixth largest city, Newport Beach, 86,000 residents. A little bit different. In the case of our situation, the process still hasn't ripened to the point where we know what the FAA is going to do. We can't tell, and if you've read our, our letter, and if you've read the FAA's proposal, you simply can't tell what they're going to do. So I'm not certain yet, and, and we're going to continue the dialogue with Phoenix, and we'll under- we'll understand more about their case. But I'm, I'm interested to hear what you have to say, because I'm not certain there's an action yet to take, because we don't know yet enough to be able to say, oh, this is what they mean when they say they're going to do these things. Again, I'm very interested to hear what you've had to say, and I have heard you say it twice to me already in our Aviation Committee meetings. So I hope that provides you with a little bit of background up here, my colleagues. And I would, again, I'm very interested to hear what our friends are going to say.
Okay, good. Well, thanks, Tony. That was a good explanation. Okay, we'll open it up for public comments. Whoever wants to address us on this issue, please come forward and state your name. Not all at once.
Somebody has to start. Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Sherman Stacy. My wife and I live at 112 Ruby Avenue. If you saw Lee Pearl's map, where the line of the flights crosses Balboa Island's South Bayfront is Ruby Avenue. If you look at the Strel map that showed where the flights had been flying, you'll find the vast majority of existing flights on Strel go between Collins, Ruby, and Diamond Avenues on Balboa Island. The FAA proposal is that rather than have only 50% of the flights go over, have 100% of the flights. Follow that narrowed, precise, predictable pattern. That appears to be their policy objective. And the effect of that is that we take the brunt of the entire airport on a location where many of my neighbors live in older homes with single-frame windows that are historic, that are difficult to change into a house that has better soundproofing. Their outdoor use becomes almost intolerable, particularly in those times when the airport sends off a lot of flights all at once. I sat with the aviation guide that the airport provides to see where the flights take off one morning about two weeks ago. Between 7:02 and 7:35, 20 flights took off. 14 of them traveled between Collins, Ruby, and Diamond Avenue. They make it very difficult to use your outdoor space. There are periods it's quieter, and we have noted, you know, we've had half the flights going over us already. The distribution from the distributions you saw from 2012 were a little wider. That's helpful. You know, we only see the belly of the plane. I can't tell whose they are from the belly of the plane. But you have a repeat in the canyon-like areas of Balboa Island where houses are close together. We have very few trees that soften the impact. But when I say we have already half the flights, we've noticed in the past three months, the sound of even the first half has become much greater than it used to be. We do not believe they're throttling back. It sounds like they're going off full power, because you start to hear them, particularly between 7:00 and 7:30. You start to hear them when they're winding up over the middle of the bay. You hear them for 75 to 90 seconds, and with 20 flights in 35 minutes, the last one leaves and you start to hear the next one coming before it's gone. We are part of a group, and many of my neighbors are here, that would like to see a dispersion more like has existed for the city for many years. It's one where we still carry the brunt. We still carry more than anyone else. Balboa Island still carries most flights going over it, but it's a densely populated area, almost the city's oldest neighborhood, and we feel that we should not be singled out to be the party to bear the brunt of the airport. We're not asking for dispersion so that everyone, or send it somewhere else. We're just asking not to be burdened with all of it, and we'd hope that the city would support that position.
Thank you.
Get the Ruby group out of your hair today. I'm Dottie Harmson, and I live with my husband at 120 Ruby Avenue, Balboa Island. And thank you for your comments today to enlighten us what's going on. We've lived on the property, our family has, since 1939. Way before jets, of course. But now we have departing from John Wayne, 187 flights a day. We, and that's according to the information that I got off of the internet, so I hope that is correct. But on an average, with 187 jets departures a day, that means every five minutes from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, we would have a flight over Balboa Island. As we understand it, that's the way this is being set up, so they all come over our island. Last night, the last two jets went over at 10:41 and 10:59 PM. This morning, between 7:00 and 8:00 AM, we had 23 flyovers, one every two to three minutes. Between 11:30 and 2:00 PM at noon, we had 23 flyovers, one every two to four minutes. And it's our understanding that the FAA has a plan to direct all commercial jets over Ruby and Diamond and evidently some other streets on Balboa Island. I'd like all of us to stop and think a minute about having 187 flights come over our house every day? Impossible. It's not necessary, and it's not going to happen. We know John Wayne is a mixed blessing. We all like an airport in our backyard, but we don't want excessive flights in any one residential area in Newport Beach. I'd like to ask today, since I understand you are kind of beholden to the FAA and Congress like we are, do we have a representative from Rorobacher's office, Congressman Rorobacher's office here today? Do we have someone from the FAA here today? I think it's time that we all get together in one room and work together as one community, not divided up in this little community and this other community, trying to slough off planes over our house to your neighborhood. So I think we need to get together to take care of this problem. It's not necessary. It's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ronnie Weinstein. I represent Dover Shores, and I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak. Mr. Kiff, thanks for the clarification, and by some things that he shared with me earlier, I'm going to refrain and take a step back as, and hopefully we'll continue our conversation. As it re, as we refer to MagVar, and everybody keeps saying, we don't have a lot of power, and we don't have a lot of strength with the FAA, and you mentioned 86,000 people Newport Beach. 86,000 people Newport Beach has a lot of influence on the county of Orange, and they own the airport. They own John Wayne Airport. The FAA does not own the airport. We have a lot of power. We need to exercise it, and we, as a community, are asking the council and the city to step forward on our behalf, and if need be, put pressure on the county to ensure that some of these actions that are taking place, such as MagVar and an air from 2014 over a year ago, has not been corrected. And in all deference to Mr. Kiff, again, I will refrain for the moment, but it's been 12, 13 months since MagVar started flying those homes over Dover Shores, over, those planes over Dover Shores. Why hasn't that been corrected? It took a year for us as a community to unite, to realize what was happening, and again, because of the confusion with NextGen, Metroplex, all these fancy names out there, there was some confusion in the community. However, again, 13 months later, let's fix MagVar. If there is an air, let it get, let it get corrected, and at that time, council, then we'll know what we're dealing with, with NextGen, and how it's going to affect us. So there's two points here. You have the Metroplex NextGen that removed the towing point. Is that accurate? So the towing point is now removed. On the towing point is a, one of these fancy new sound monitors that the city invested in. Well, if it's not hitting the towing point with NextGen or Metroplex, let me tell you, it's not hitting it now, because it's not going over that little mound in, in the dunes, so it's impossible for us to be getting accurate readings. Point again, let's correct the air 13 months later, and we would appreciate it as a community if you would put pressure on the county to ensure that that change is made and is corrected, and then we can, we can speak from an intellectual standpoint of what may be occurring with NextGen and Metroplex, because in all honesty, we cannot, at least our neighborhood, it's a little different for Balboa Island, and I understand, cannot speak from a position of knowledge at any stretch. I appreciate your conversations with the city of Phoenix. Thanks for following through with that. I spoke to them today. I, I just, I think it's important, and I will speak for a moment on behalf of everybody, especially if the towing point is taken out, and that relates to the environmental impact study. I think it's very important that the city steps up and maybe looks at their funds and helps us out as different communities with that environmental impact study, because if now those planes are going to be focused over a concentrated area, there definitely could be serious health concerns to be considered for those people that are now going to get 100% of the brunt. Two things will happen. If the towing point is removed, and they fly straight over Dover Shores, and the towing point's removed, or they fly over Balboa Island, there could be some serious concerns. And maybe affecting the health of 3,000 people, if I take Mr. Pearl's numbers versus 7,000 people, is something that should be considered. And I guess that's my beeper. So I appreciate it, and I hope you take a serious, hard look at first MagVar, and then at the impact that NextGen will have on certain communities if that towing point isn't put back into play. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Lee Pearl, and I represent today our community of Balboa Island, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things real quick. The map that you see in front of you today, or behind you, is actually just the community of Balboa Island and all of the other neighborhoods asking for some level of relief from the noise and pollution. That's not really a proposal. It's just, to give you an idea, that the direct hit that we're going to be taking in the future is pretty burdensome on all of our residents. If you could go back to the slide with the staff recommendations, I would appreciate that also. If you see the point that says, avoid actions will impact new communities, that's probably the most disappointing thing that I see here today in terms of the feeling that I get that we are going to ever see any relief, because any change, whether it's minor or major, will probably impact some of the other areas. Any of the options that I presented just as ideas, we're still going to get noise and pollution, because there's probably a mile spread of pollutants, maybe even two miles from the planes, and the noise can be heard almost from Lido all the way over to Corona del Mar from the airplane. So I think I just wanted to comment that I'm a little disappointed, because I don't feel as though the city understands the issue that we're facing. It's a pretty burdensome future for Balboa Island, and by having a staff recommendation that says, avoid actions that will impact new communities, it appears to me that you recognize that although the flight patterns are going to get narrowed and we're going to get hammered, Beacon Bay, Promontory, parts of Peninsula Point and the peninsula, it doesn't appear that the city is going to move in a direction to provide any relief to the residents. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, any other speakers?
Mayor Zelich, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Referring to the same slide, I was surprised to see the final bullet point at the bottom of it, that the city manager is recommending no changes to council policy A17, which is our John Wayne Airport policy. Because I thought at the Aviation Committee meeting, we heard the city manager being disappointed that in that policy, there is no direction as to whether we as a city advocate fanning or not fanning, and I thought the purpose of this study session was to try to formulate a position. Whether we think we can do anything about it or take a defeatist attitude, we at least wanted to know whether, as a group, we are in support of the fanning idea or not. I personally think it's a no-brainer that the planes want to go down the middle of the upper bay between the two bluffs, but when it opens up, I think dispersion is quite reasonable. And as I told the Aviation Committee, I also don't understand this idea of not impacting new communities, because I would go radically further than that and ask why we as a city would not be advocating for the FAA to direct some of the flights to make sharp turns to the, taking off, going to the left, which, from where I live, I look out over the back bay from my house, looking up San Diego Creek towards the old abandoned El Toro Air Station, and it would seem reasonable to me that some fraction of the planes could be directed out that way. And as I think Mr. Charles Griffin presented to you some months ago, at least in his opinion, as an aviation engineer, it was not impractical for some of the planes to make a sharp turn to the right and go up the 405 or 55 freeway. And I don't know why we would have a policy that is against those ideas. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Petros.
Just on that last point, I want to make, make it clear. Mr. Kiff, you, you never, I didn't ever hear you express disappointment or concern that we do or do not have a fanning or dispersion in A17.
Yeah, it wasn't disappointment or concern. It was noting that that is not there.
You noted that it's not.
Yeah, and after reviewing it, I actually think it's a very wise policy. That our, your predecessors were very thoughtful about trying to describe a way that, to contain some expectations but advocate strongly for others, that we, that we did have a lot of control over.
Mayor Protim Dixon.
Thank you, Dave. Could you add some clarification about the settlement agreement that's just been approved by the city and as well as Orange County Board of Supervisors? How do these issues impact the settlement agreement? How are the two related?
So they only impact the settlement agreement tangentially. Remember, the settlement agreement generally has to do with the million, million, number of million annual passengers that can go through the airport, any one year. The number of average daily departures of the loudest flights, the Class A flights. It sets in place limitations on when the, if the county could amend the curfew, the noise-based curfew, and that's generally the scope of the settlement agreement. What happens, though, is if, if the departure procedures are changed too radically, and this is, this map is a good example, you could have the planes going around the noise monitors, and the noise monitors are important to the curfew. And if somehow you have this, a flight going somewhere else and being loud and louder and avoiding the noise monitors, you've negated a lot of the importance that we put in the noise-based curfew. So that's the biggest link to this. The other thing, too, if you look at the art study that we did, the consultant looked at just noise, noise impacts in general, and it talked about altitude, and I've mentioned that a little bit in my slide. Once a plane, the study states, once the plane gets to 3,000 feet, the, any noise regulation is off, so they can do what they want to do. They can apply power. They don't have to coast all the way to the ocean. As long as they're at 3,000 feet, they can apply power. So arguably, if you had a steeper climb faster, again, I think that is beneficial to more of the community, it does have a tangential link to the noise monitors, again, and makes some of them, I think in a good way, less important.
Oh, another question. Could you speak, to the extent that you know this, or have a directional comment, about new aircraft, new technologies for aircraft? Are we at John Wayne being served by the latest available jet aircraft in terms of noise abatement, pollution abatement? Are we constricted in any way from getting the best aircraft to fly out of John Wayne?
Well, the, again, the art study from 2000 Well, again, the art study from 2008 talked about the best technology at the time, and they looked at, just as quick background, most of the aircraft that are regulated are all Stage III, so more advanced than Stage I, than Stage II, and Stage III was the state of the art at the time. Now there are Stage IV aircraft. In fact, I think any aircraft designed after 2006 had to be Stage IV. John Wayne does have a shorter runway, so some of the Stage IV aircraft are some of these larger aircrafts that may not be able to use John Wayne. However, what we're seeing with the more advanced Boeing 737s, they are meeting Stage IV standards, and they're flying out of John Wayne successfully, but they tend to be that 737 model.
They are the latest technology from a noise.
Yes, and the fleets will continue to upgrade. Again, if I'm putting on my little optimistic hat, it's maybe, hopefully, it's not too naive, as they move towards the ultra-high bypass engines like the Pratt-Witney's, and remember, the air carriers aren't doing this totally altruistically, it also saves fuel for them if they can get a more efficient engine. The more efficient engine are also, tend to be quieter. So as they move to those engines, we should be able to see, as we saw between Stage I and II, and II and III, and III and IV, additional noise benefits from that.
Councilmember Petros. Does the FAA listen to Phoenix?
And again, we'll get more information on this right now. The FAA is actually parrying with Phoenix. They are fighting Phoenix and their arguments right now. So my impression is, there is not a collaborative environment. It is adversarial at this point.
Councilmember Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick here, what are the enforcement policies of this, when a plane is too loud or goes off course? And then who enforces that, and then what are the consequences?
So, Councilmember Duffy, good question. There are enforcement actions and consequences, and it's kind of, as I understand it, it's more of a three strikes and you're out. You can, if you violate any one of the noise monitor standards, you get a warning from the county for that pilot, that air carrier, that instance. And then in some, if it's egregious enough, after, I think it's the second or the third one, they can prohibit that plane from ever flying out of John Wayne Airport. And they do, they obviously, they monitor the noise monitors religiously, and there have been violations of the curfew and violations of those air carriers. I don't know they've ever reached the state of having to kick someone out, because it can be corrected if the flight is flown correctly, if the plane is flown correctly.
Okay. Councilmember Petros.
Dave, to follow up, then, the comment period for the EA, the FAA's environmental document, closed on October 8th. Their staff is now going back, reading all those comments, and there is a statutory requirement for them to come back and respond to those comments, and that generally takes about a month. Is that correct, generally? They would, at that time, too, they could, they could do, so that everybody understands, procedurally, they could draft a response to comments document, and then file what's called a finding of no significant impact, and they're done. They could say, okay, procedurally, we're done, and we're going to do what we want. Or they could be compelled by virtue of the comments to do, draft an environmental impact statement, a federal document. And that, then, would be the process by which you'd get all of the information about pollutants and noise and the like. They will probably come out in about a month with the direction that they're going to take. Would that be a fair expectation?
I think that's a fair expectation. You know, we're asking them to do an environmental impact statement.
Correct.
They might come back and do a revised or supplemental environmental assessment. So we'll have to see what they do, but about 30 days, probably, accurate.
How can we ensure that whatever happens, these good people get knowledge of, and the community at large? What can we do? What steps can we take to make sure that the public understands, oh, FAA's response will be out in two weeks? It will be out, you know, whatever.
Well, the good people who spoke today, I've been in touch with them at their direction and my direction, so I'm happy to keep them apprised. I think it's a great role for the Aviation Committee, too, to continue to be that forum.
I will, I will be working with staff to get media out into the public, like the press that I did do, so that there's that knowledge. And I'm going to butcher your name, and I do apologize for this, but Ms. Hartson, I thought you had a wonderful idea, and if I don't, if it's okay with my colleagues, to draft a invitation letter to Congressman Rohrbacher's office and a representative of the FAA to host a meeting here. I don't know if they will join us, but I think a legitimate invitation would be something that we might want to do.
Yes.
And then I have already spoken with Supervisor Steele at the Board of Supervisors on this matter, but we'll follow up with her office again to continue that dialogue, and we'll keep that going. So I think my point is, Mr. Mayor, if this thing is in play, I do appreciate the contribution that Councilmember Duffy has provided here. This thing is in play. We know what the community is saying. We've heard it. And now let's continue to just play this out and keep everybody apprised, so that when we do have an iron to strike, we know which direction it's going to fall.
Before you close, Mr. Mayor, I did want to comment a little bit about what Lee Pearl said, because I didn't want to disappoint him, as much as it sounds like I have, involving avoiding actions that will impact new communities. Remember, if we go back to this slide, you could see, certainly on Balboa Island, it's not all down Ruby. A lot of it is on Ruby, but when you talk about avoiding actions that will affect new communities, it's generally trying to stay outside of these areas, the green areas here, the blue areas here. So I could see something, in fact, the city studied something a couple of years ago, and I'm going to get back to this slide and point with my pointer, so that council members can see that. We studied a plan that would have come out here and turned, and then come here and turned, and then went across towing, and that does give a little bit different path coming out this way than the traditional Strel. So, and very preliminary thinking about how that might work, but the FAA was intrigued by that concept of the two turns in the upper bay. And it does say to Balboa Island, that if I live on Ruby, I may not get all of it if potentially there is, there are two types of departures, one that goes, you know, over here, and one that goes over here. I know it's a very different, small, little difference, but to me, that is something that's still something we could discuss with the FAA about through the Aviation Committee. It's a challenging thing. I don't know if they'll be interested, but there are, when the FAA thinks about fanning, it's very small. When we, because I just want to kind of disabuse the community, that they're never going to look at something widespread, that goes miles across and has one coming over here and one coming over here.
Okay. Dave, could you go back to your recommendation slide? So is there anything in there that's inconsistent with the letter that we sent to the FAA?
No, the only thing that's new would be, should we, outside of Next Gen, start to look at that departure pattern again on our own? But the rest, and of course, MagVar has nothing to do with Next Gen, but everything there is consistent with, regarding Next Gen bullet, is consistent with what our letter said.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
David, it's a process question. Is it good, are we obligated to walk hand in hand with the county on this? Can we take a separate position? What is the county? Are they willing to work with us on this? I mean, should we go beyond our congressperson and start looking at, just dealing with the FAA directly? And, I mean, how aggressive should we be in trying to deal with this? And I mean, I listened to the Phoenix example, and the larger city, and potentially greater advocacy strength, but they're running into a dead wall. I mean, how can we skin this cat perhaps another way, through other kinds of influence in Washington?
It depends on what you would like to do. For me, the things of staying at the table with the FAA, fixing MagVar are key points here. Those are hand in hand with the county's points. So I would not want to be too separated from them, and I do think we've had a very good relationship with them over the many, many years that we've lived next to John Wayne Airport, and we're very fortunate to have that, because other airports will just say, hey, you know, community, you're on your own. You do your own letter. You do your own approach. So I'm reluctant to, I don't see a path where we would break away from them, unless we had an issue where we clearly disagreed, and that hasn't appeared yet.
Okay.
Well, I'd just say that to my friends that live on Balboa Island, that I'm probably the council member up here that's most affected by the airport. If you take Ruby Avenue and project it directly north, I live on Promontory Bay. If you go down Bayside Drive and see where the Yellow Hummer is, that's my house. And so where the planes take off on this path that's up here, I'm just a little bit to the west of it, but I get the impact of it all the time. I get the noise. If I had the luxury of waiting till 7:00 in the morning to get up, that would be my alarm clock when I hear the planes going over, and certainly feel the impact of the soot and other stuff that falls off of the airplanes onto my patio furniture and boat and so forth. So I understand the problem, but I do agree with Councilmember Petros that, you know, we need to take a measured approach to this, continue to monitor, work with the groups, and see what the outcome is going to be, and at that point in time, we can ascertain what course of action would be necessary for us to take. But in the meantime, I can't think of anything else that we're not doing. I thought your idea, the meetings with Congressman and FAA are good, that was suggested, and the other ideas that we come up with, we should be pursuing them. But I do think we have to take a measured approach until we see exactly what the FAA is going to come up with on it.
Councilmember Duffy.
Sorry to keep bugging you with this, but I get the enforcement. I get the consequence, but on the motivation side of the enforcement, is it one of us or is it one of them? And who, do you know who it is that's checking?
I do. I don't know if Eric's here today, but it's Eric Freed, and I work with him consistent all the time. I worked with him twice last week. Someone called me.
He's on our payroll.
Pardon me?
We pay, he's our guy?
No, he's the county's guy. We do have Tom Edwards, who is our guy, and Tom and Eric talk a lot. But like, for instance, just this week, yesterday, a gentleman from Harbor Cove called and said, I swear, I heard a commercial air carrier go off on Sunday before 8:00. So we checked the patterns. Tom checked that for me, and there was two general aviation planes that went off, but no commercial. So people can check on their own, too. It's the website, the flight tracker thing on the county's website is really powerful. It's radar-driven, so you can see, I think, within five feet of where that plane went.
Well, I just vote for maximum motivation to whoever it is. Thank you.
Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. If it hasn't been done already, it may be worth hiring a heavy-hitting Washington lobbyist firm, I can't believe I'm going to say that, a K Street firm, because congressmen are, don't tell, are local, but they're a dime a dozen, and having some more muscle could be a good idea. So I know some good firms. I'm sure you do, too. Have we done that, by the way?
We haven't on this issue, but I think if you note the way Aaron and our legal counsel prepared the letter, it's setting forth concerns, and if those concerns are not addressed, it is providing a path to something much stronger.
Okay.
And I think that's when we might call that in.
Public comments closed. We have other things we have to get to. Okay, any other council member comments? Any other questions? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is study session number four, preparing for Okay, Dave, we're right on schedule, 5:00.
Excellent.
Rock and roll.
Would you like me to? Okay. Good evening, Council. Mayor, Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, and Jim Augers with you tonight. Jim Augers with our Municipal Operations. He's in charge. He's the manager of our sewers, storm brains, and streetlights, I believe, is the new designation, and he'll be here to speak a little bit about the preparation. We wanted to give you this presentation tonight. We've had a lot of comments from the community. I know the press has really been talking about the El Nino winter we're expecting, and there is concern in the community about what's the city doing about it. So we thought we'd give you a little, for the folks at home to look at and kind of see what we're doing here. First of all, what is El Nino? I've had several people talk to me, what is El Nino? Well, El Nino is a phenomenon where we have a warming of the oceans in the tropics, and that warming also kind of changes the wind pattern, so it blows west to east across there, and it sets up a condition that can bring a lot more rainfall to certain areas. The National Weather Association is forecasting that we have a 95% chance of an El Nino winter, and that'll, about an 85% chance that it's going to last into spring. So with that, I put it together, kind of a little table here, of some numbers that people can look at, better understand El Nino. The little chart here, if you start at the top left corner, is basically talking about strong El Nino years, and the years are on top there. I know it's small detail here, but you can look on the website. And as you go down to the bottom right, you're talking more weaker El Ninos. And the little graph at the bottom shows, as the areas are much more dark green or ember, those are very heavy rain areas in years, and how the rain distributed over the United States. And the brown areas show where it was less than average, and how that got distributed. And the table on, we just want to give you a reference on there, the average rainfall in our basin, starting back in 1877, is about 14.8 inches. So then we picked out some general years, you know, like in 2009, '10, we had a strong El Nino, but we only had 16.3 inches that year. 2004, '05, we had a weak El Nino, and we got 37 inches. And again, that's important later. Another strong year after that, we had 31 inches. Another strong year, 32. You can kind of see the table. But what it also shows is, it depends where this weather pattern comes in. So we could have a strong El Nino, but not get a lot of rain. It could go too far south into Mexico. It could go too far north. So the important point coming out of this is that we expect to get more weather this year, and hopefully more rain, but it's not guaranteed. So we want to make sure that people are conserving water still. We've had a lot of residents talk about, well, I'm going to stop conserving, we're going to get lots of rain this winter. That's not the case. We want to make sure everybody still conserves. We don't know how it is. And even if we got a strong El Nino, let's say we got 16 inches, it still doesn't take us out of our drought situation. We have a long, long way to go on that. So how does it affect Newport Beach? Well, being a low-lying city, our big concern is when we get a lot of rain, and we have high tide levels, and then we get wind or storm surge, we have a higher increase of flooding. Obviously, there's some areas of our town that are protected by tide gates, so we have to close those gates. The tide plays into it in various islands like Balboa Island. We put on here kind of the forecast of the tides coming through the year, and you can see here, we have some high tides. Happens to be over the holidays, October 25th to 31st, Thanksgiving, or that week there, we have a real high tide. When you get into Thanksgiving, we have the 22nd to the 29th, we have another strong tide there, and I think that actually the highest tide is on the 24th. And then you get into another one in December. Those are the key tides that we're concerned about. If we had a real low tide and we had a lot of rain and maybe a storm surge, it wouldn't be as a concern as when we have those high tides. So those are important dates to watch, and they'll play into the discussion later. Some of the concerns we have, and this is pictures of the past, you can have street flooding. You see some of the top pictures. You see some of the top pictures there. You see a high tide in the bay over on Bay Avenue. And then, of course, the tide gates are closed, and we have street flooding and rainfall. Island Avenue. Balboa Island has some areas of low seawalls that could have some overtopping. The ferry, obviously, is a concern. We always sandbag that. And then over on the peninsula where we have low seawalls over by the Balboa Village, we can have some problems there. Those would be typical, heavy rains, tide valves are closed, get some storm surge, some of the problems that might come out of that. The other thing you get out of El Nino are basically winter storms, is you have strong winds and, of course, falling trees is a problem. You can see on the top there, we had a tree fall on power lines. That can create interruptions in your service. We have a lot of sand and debris that blows around. San Antonio River discharges a lot of material. San Diego Creek discharges a lot of material. That creates problems that we have to clean up. And of course, the blowing sand and wind across the boardwalks and things like that. You can also have some slope failures. We've had a couple of those pictured on the bottom. Bayside Drive would be one of those areas and some other slopes in town that we have to watch. So question here is what we're doing to do this. So our main front is basically preparation and staffing correctly. And I'm going to turn this over to Jim because Municipal Operations does the bulk of that work for us, and he can go through what they're doing right now.
Well, thank you, Dave. Good afternoon, council. Like Dave stated, our big days are going to be Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day, where we're going to have tides close to eight foot, could be a little bit higher. So staff will be working those holidays. And areas that we're concerned are going to be the low-lying areas around the Newport Peninsula and Balboa Island. And what we're doing to prepare for this, we do this every year, so it's nothing new for our division. We deal with high tides and rain on a yearly basis. But what we're doing in advance, we're inspecting and cleaning all of our catch basins. Our contractor does that cleaning. They clean all of our catch basins. Inlet guards, we've removed all the inlet guards, CDS units, V-ditches. We have 38 portable pumps that we use both on the island and the peninsula, and those are serviced and ready to go at a moment's notice. We're purchasing four additional water pumps, and we're going to keep the older ones in stock and get us through the winter season. So once we pass the winter season, we'll turn those pumps in, but that should give us well over, under just 45 pumps to maintain during the winter season. We're coming across leaky seawalls as the tides get higher. We are working over the contract to fill those voids and holes to slow up the leaks because they are getting weak, and they're aging, as we all know. Staff inspects and maintains the 87 tidal valves on the peninsula and the island. We operate those valves daily. It's a gate valve that goes up and down, and those are maintained on a monthly basis, so parts are repaired to make sure that they're functional. And what else is the city doing to prepare for this? Parks Division has already started early pruning of city trees throughout the city. For emergency response, city is training more employees on chainsaw safety and operations. So if we do have an emergency, before we can get our contractor out there, they can go out there and cut limbs, remove them from the sidewalk and the parkways or in the middle of the streets. We've ordered additional sandbags, more than we do on any normal given year. So we ordered 7,000 filled sandbags. We're going to have 10,000 empty sandbags. Those are going to be primarily for our use, but will also be given to the residents. They can come into the corporation yard and pick up bags that they need. The empty ones, we give out as well. They can fill those up with the sand on the oceanfront, but we just expect them to put the sand back on the beach when they're done. We will tarp some hillsides of the sensitive areas if they come, they're aware, or we are aware of them, when they come reported. As you know, you'll see sandbags distributed among the city, but also sand berms you'll see all throughout the peninsula. More so, both sides of Balboa Pier, Newport Pier, and areas of the oceanfront, you'll see sand berms. That's what's going to protect the parking lots and the oceanfront properties. So you'll see them out there during the coming months. We already have some built up now, so you'll see staff out there. And as the tides come in and they get close to those berms, we will build those up a little bit higher just to make sure that we have the proper coverage.
In addition to that, we have multiple departments working on this. The other one, Public Works, is actively working, and this has been going on for many years now. We've been really working on our infrastructure and trying to secure our seawalls, our storm drains. We've been putting money into our piers, our tide valves, and that's going to help us as we put a lot of effort into the past. That'll help us in this season. We're also currently securing all our current active construction projects. We're making sure they're ready for the winter. We're trying to button things up early. I know Marina Park's about to get done here. We're finishing up Dover. Getting the projects out of the critical stages where you might have a lot of erosion and things like that is one of our key issues. And then we're also tasked with working with all the private construction sites under our NPDS program we talked about last time. This is making sure that they have the proper sandbags in place, erosion control, they have desultation basins, and even equipment on site. You can see that slide down the bottom there. It's kind of a past practice where you end up having a storm and a lot of erosion runoff. We've really tried to eliminate that with sandbags and filters and things like that. So that's a critical component before the storm hits. We've been looking at our traffic signal system. We've been doing a lot of retrofits and putting capital funds into that to make sure it's up to par, taking care of any problem wires. We've been looking at the signs where those are usually the critical ones, the high winds hit it, making sure the brackets are not corroded away. We've been looking to get out to our mooring permittees to send out a letter to them to make sure they're checking their lines and tackle. Some of that times, we can have a boat break loose, and it'd just be better if the folks could check it now, make sure they're taking care of any freight or worn equipment now before we have a problem later. We have a couple of projects now. We're looking at some roof repairs, some of our fire stations we're trying to address now before the winter is. We're having some problems with that. It's really busy, as you can imagine, a roof business right now, trying to get bids, and that's been a struggle. But we're going to keep trying to address that so we can take care of it before the winter hits. Other things we're doing, working with outside agencies. I know we've talked to Caltrans already. We've talked about Coast Highway to make sure they're out there, look at some of their critical slopes and their drainage systems, and they're inspecting those and taking care of it. Some of the other utilities to make sure that they can hopefully get to their priorities and concerns before winter happens. And then we'll probably be sending a letter out soon to the HOAs, asking them to look at their systems. That's critical. They have storm drain systems and grates and basins and trees and things that might cause problems for others. So we're going to ask them to go ahead and look at their systems and do some of the things we're doing also. So city response preceding storms. Before the storm hits, obviously, we want to make sure we're doing a lot of things Jim and I have been talking about. We're going to be monitoring weather forecasts, providing empty sandbags for folks in the public. That's a traditional thing we can do. There is some sandbags, I believe we provided some filled ones, too, and we'll make sure that word gets out. We want to make sure we have the necessary staff available for it. We're going to review our emergency operations procedures and conduct drills. I know the fire and police departments do this routinely along with MOD, so we're making sure that we keep up with that. We're going to increase public awareness, obviously, on the websites and social media so folks can keep educated and keep up with the various programs, you know, are very active and they can keep up with that and keeping their volunteers going. I'm sorry, my screen's cutting out for some reason. During a storm, though, we get into a different mode, and again, we're monitoring our traffic signal systems with our live feeds. We're coordinating with utility agencies, that's Edison Gas and others, to make sure their systems are up, responding to active issues and problems. And a lot of that comes through if it's a 911-type issue, it'll be fire and police, and they're very well-versed and trained for those kind of things. If it's a flooding issue, other resources might be coming in. Obviously, life safety and other things are priority one. I'm sorry, the screen keeps cutting out. Hopefully, the folks at home aren't missing anything on that. Calling in staff and volunteers, we use our force multipliers if we need to, and Jim's crews will have that. We'll have folks on call if it's going to be a real predicted hard storm. We'll make sure we have the staff available for that. And then, again, providing updates to the various folks in the public through our websites, social media, and other things are important during the storm. If we need to, we can activate the emergency operations centers, the DOCs in the departments, and if necessary, we can activate the EOC, depending on the magnitude and the need of the storms. And again, maintaining records and things, all that happens, it's part of the EOC and DOC activations. Again, what we've talked about is what the city's doing, but an important part is what the folks can do. And we've spread this out. We've put out this on our websites and some flyers. Want to make sure that you're doing what you can to do to make sure you're safe. So preseason is a good time to address some things. You want to assess your flood risk and where your property is. You want to make sure you're purchasing the sandbags early. You don't want to wait till the storm hits and you're trying to go down to Home Depot or our office and try to get sandbags. If you know you're in a flood area, go ahead and purchase those now and store them. You want to update your family plans, your emergency procedure kits. You want to review and update the flood insurance policies, and make sure you sign up for those notification services like Nixle, OC Alert, our Facebook pages and things like that so you can be communicated with and understand what's going on during the storm if there one hits. There's a lot of things you can do around your house that'll help you out. Know where your utility shut-offs are. Not everybody knows how to shut off their utilities or where they're at. You want to schedule those home improvements now, your roof repairs, windows, things that you know you've been kind of putting off that could be a problem. Another thing to look at is your yard and your vegetation. Trim the trees, things that are maybe questionable branches or something that are overhanging your house, something that might come down on your utility lines that could take your electrical or something out of service. Cleaning out your gutters, maybe even installing surge protectors on your lines in case we have any kind of lightning or something associated and have electrical problems. And then when you get into the forecast of a storm, this is where you kind of move into the next mode. You want to check your property, make sure your drainage systems are functioning correctly. Secure any items that might blow around, cushions on your seats and things like that that could blow around. This would be the time to install those sandbags in areas that you know you have historical flooding. Obviously, arrange for your shelter needs for your family, your children, your elderly folks. That's important, too. And then if you have any questions about our city system, maybe you see a blocked storm drain or something like that, you can call this number on the screen or our general number, and we'll make sure you get to our Jim's folks and those to go out and make sure that the storm drains are working, the public ones. And then during that storm, again, you want to avoid areas that are subject to flooding. Use 911 only for emergency purposes. They have their own tasks, and to clog that down is not good for the community. So if you don't have an emergency, please don't call it. If you do, you need to use that. Respect the barricades and signs and authorities. You always hear about people trying to drive through flooded areas in puddles, and it's just, if you could not do that, it'll keep someone else from being towed out or cause another emergency we have to respond to. And then not driving over those flooded roads and keeping your distance. If you happen to see downed power lines, particularly see a tree fallen over something, it's very nice you want to see, hey, look at that, and looks neat to go look at. But there could be downed power lines. Be careful on that. Keep your distance from that. And again, listen and watch for weather reports. Evacuation immediately if you're told by the authorities. Turn off your utilities and switches and valves only if you're instructed to. And then again, check and look out for the children, elderly pets, disabled during the storm and flooding. That's kind of what we're hoping to get out to the community, and any questions, we'll take it this time.
Okay. I've just got a couple of questions. One of the things that we looked at when you were presenting the alternatives on the seawalls was sandbags on top of the seawalls around Balboa Island. Would it make any sense to, rather than wait until we get a storm and putting pumps out there, to either sandbag the entire wall of the South Bay front of Balboa Island, say, from November to March during the high season, or at least the areas that we know are the most susceptible to flooding because typically we're out there with pumps after the seawall starts flooding over? So does it make any sense to do that, maybe not only Balboa Island, but some of the other areas we've heard about, like out on Island Avenue, and have it pre-sandbaged before the, you know, it actually starts overflowing and we're having to come out there and trying to battle whatever the water situation is with pumps?
It's a good question. As far as Balboa Island and sandbagging the seawalls, we have never done that before, so that could be an option. There's over 3,000 feet of seawalls, so that's thousands and thousands of sandbags, which is going to take a lot of man-hours to stack those. Our concern would be it's a smooth surface on top, you stack them two and three high. We do get a lot of people walking on top of the seawall. They could get kicked off. They could be knocked over by, you know, the wind-blown surf if we have a high surf event and it raises that tide. But then we have a wind event, it's sloshing back and forth. There's a good chance that it could knock over those sandbags, and that's what we're concerned about. So that is an option. The ferry, we do sandbag both sides. That's a low area on the island, so we do that every year. There's low areas on the fun zone in Balboa Village that we sandbag. There's areas on, say, Island Street near the boat and around the boatyards. So there's areas that we do every year that we, it's known that we will be sandbagging during those events. But as far as the thought of sandbagging the seawalls, we've never done that before, but that could be an option. It's just the manner of resources and how long it's going to take and will they last? Will they stay up there for a week with people not knocking them over? It'll just be constant monitoring.
Well, the reason I bring it up is you mentioned that those holiday dates where we're going to have eight-foot tides, if we have storms and wind during those periods, almost certainly we're going to have overtopping on Island Avenue and the South Bay front, particularly in those critical areas that we know every time that we get that condition that we're out there with the pumps. I mean, we know where those spots are, so maybe it's not the entire island, but maybe it's critical spots. I don't know. I'm just bringing it up as a thought. So where do the, where do folks go to get sandbags? Now, that's the thing that people are unclear of, I think, and I get quite a few questions on it. And I wasn't actually aware. We offered it in two conditions, filled sandbags and unfilled sandbags. So could you go in that a little bit more detail?
Yeah, sure. The sandbags are at our corporation yard at 592 Superior Avenue. It's on the corner of Superior and Industry Way. And during business hours, if we don't have the DOC in action from seven to probably four o'clock, we will pass out sandbags. Historically, we've given 10 filled sandbags per resident. We also hand out some empty ones if they do need a few more. And we just ask that the residents try to be proactive. Don't wait until the storm is here. Give us a heads up. If you guys do see a leaning tree or a pothole, a hillside, whatever, call us as soon as possible. If it's after hours, you're more than welcome to call the PD dispatch, and they can get ahold of us after hours. We do have staff on site, so they can get ahold of us. But the sandbags will be at the corporation yard, and we'll be handing them out to the residents and anyone that needs them.
Mayor Protem Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on your questioning, maybe let's get the community involved in helping to put the sandbags out. Maybe the weekend before Thanksgiving, we have Sandbag Day, and we have some distribution point at Balboa Island and encourage residents to come and places and make it a fun day. It's like clean the beaches, you know? It's put out a sandbag, and then we can help people do it, save a little on city labor and make it a community event to save the seawalls with sandbags or some, make it some community-driven event. But I also agree from a communication standpoint to let people know that they have an option. They can at least pick up the empty sandbags now. But maybe let's look for ways we can involve the community to save their property and help city staff solve this problem that we know is going to most likely happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other council comments, any public comments on this?
Mayor Selich, members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. I noticed in the city manager's newsletters that were posted on Friday, there was a statement that the recent high tides have been 1.4 feet higher than was predicted from the tide charts. My first question about that would be whether that's a misprint because 1.4 feet error in a tide prediction seems like an awful lot. Second question about that would be whether that's something new that's happening in a harbor. And the third question would be the chart that the mayor was referring to, showing these three eight-foot tides, the first of which actually comes in just two weeks from now, October 25th through 31st, it says. Do those incorporate that correction for the 1.4 feet, or do you have to add something to this, in which case, even in the absence of a storm, we would be expecting them to overtop those seawalls? Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's a good question. Can you answer that?
I'd like to answer that. Historically, I wouldn't say historically, but last year and a half, we have seen an increase of the tide height. So over the last year and a half, we have seen the tides go a foot over what we're seeing[1720.41] seeing in the tide charts. As of yesterday, we were 1.3 higher, that was above what was predicted in the, in the charts. So the, 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 the average over on, say, for Thanksgiving, the eight-foot and seven-foot four for Christmas Eve or seven-foot eight, excuse me, on Christmas Eve and Christmas, those are accounted for that overage. So that's what we're predicting is going to take place on those days.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Any other council comments? Okay, well, thanks for that presentation and hopefully the word will start getting out to folks and what they can do to prepare for this coming winter. So I'll move to study session item five, which is the council policy on vehicle, vehicle equipment guidelines.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Mike Pizzani, Director of Municipal Operations. I'm going to talk about the city equipment vehicle replacement guidelines. This came up back in January, February when we, when council approved the purchase of two new fire engines and Mayor Protem Dixon inquired about how we know it's time to purchase new vehicles and wanted a little more discussion on our policy. So the F9 policy is one of the council policies. It lists vehicles and equipment by type and categories have usually miles or hours in case of construction equipment and years of service guidelines. The policy was last revised in 2001, so it was due for revision. And since that time, vehicle reliability has improved considerably and, but also budget shortfalls and mandates such as CNG, fueling led us to keep vehicles longer. In the last few months, we've worked with various users, including public safety departments, to determine the viable vehicle equipment lifespans to both maximize usage but minimize downtime. That's very important, we'll come back to that a little bit later. In the policy revision, we've adjusted the service lives of most vehicles upward, added some new categories, and some categories of vehicles and equipment were removed such as trash trucks, refuse transfer trailers. And I just, it's not a long presentation, but I have a couple of examples of how we've, how we've changed, things I want to highlight. For fire equipment, the fire engines, the current policy is 10 years with no allowance for refuse, or, excuse me, reserve status. And working with the fire department, based on the current types of the equipment, we've decided we can go a little longer with frontline equipment to 13 years. But what we found is a certain number of pieces of fire engines, for instance, were keeping longer as we, reserve units are not used every day, they're placed in service when frontline units are down for maintenance or on a wildfire, for instance. And so we kind of wanted a guideline for how long that those extra vehicles should remain in the fleet. Fire department has eight frontline fire engines and three reserve engines right now. And so there's not a lot of latitude for additional engines. If you have one that's at a wildfire, one doing normal, regular maintenance and possibly one with a longer repair, then you're out of, out of reserve units. So we try to keep as few reserve units as we can get by with. For the fire trucks, ladders and quints, the current policy is 15 years with no reserve status. We kept that at that length of time. Maintenance issues kind of creep up after 15 years. So we, because there's only two frontline ladder trucks and one reserve, we have a little bit of a more extended time for the reserve because we're just not buying as many as often. Having eight frontline fire engines, every couple of years you're buying one or two, so you'll always have a kind of a fresh reserve fleet. We've bought two ladder trucks or a ladder and a quint in the past four years, so we're not going to be buying another one probably for another, you know, 10 years. So it's important that, you know, those are relatively young trucks and shouldn't cause a lot of maintenance issues, but, you know, by the time we have a ladder truck that's about 25 years old and a reserve status, it's going to need to be replaced. Paramedic ambulances, currently 80,000 miles in six years with no allowance for reserve status. We propose to run them 100,000 miles in eight years. Should be noted that through the, the policy, there's really three types of vehicles that run up against the mileage as opposed to the years. Paramedic ambulances, it's Oasis transportation vans and police patrol cars. Most other vehicles in our fleet don't run up that many miles because generally it's 15,000 to 20,000 miles for those types of equipment. Much of the rest of the fleet's anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 miles a year. And again, for police equipment, we kept patrol and traffic vehicles at 75,000 in four years. We're not proposing any changes. They raised the mileage on police motorcycles slightly if there's any that do approach that mileage, milestone. And then we added a category for police detective and plane vehicles. One of the other important ways we use these guidelines is we set the replacement rental rates for equipment, which is the annual fees that using departments pay into the equipment replacement fund. These accumulated funds are used for the ultimate replacement of each vehicle or piece of equipment. Basically, once the new vehicle comes in, we try to calculate what we believe the cost is ultimately a replacement at the end of eight or 10 or 15 years. And so we use that, that number. These proposed changes, because we're doing it over a longer period of time, it allows reduction in the annual vehicle contribution. And we estimate that these changes will save the general and enterprise funds a little over a million dollars a year. For instance, you know, where we used to recoup the replacement cost of a fire, fire engine over 10 years, moving it up to 13 years and various other extended vehicle, classes of vehicles that are actually in the report. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Okay. Yeah, I have a few I just want to, want to throw out on this because this is one of the things I've been, I've been interested in. First of all, congratulations to the staff and I guess this went to the finance committee for making these recommendations, saving us a million dollars a year. That's a, that's a, that's a huge savings. I guess I, I look at it and it just doesn't seem to me that we've gone quite far enough on it. And I'm not a, I'm a car guy, but I'm not an expert on, on public safety vehicles and some of these specialized pieces of equipment. But it just seems to me that we, with the modern equipment and technology that we have now, that some of this equipment doesn't need to be replaced as often as, as we want. And I'm just going to point out to a couple of examples. First of all, on the fire trucks, I just don't understand what happens to a fire truck in 15 years that you have to put it into, into reserve. They're basically diesel engine vehicles that properly maintained will run forever. They're maintained in garages in pristine condition. In fact, I went by a ladder truck the other day and I thought it was one of the new ones that we bought back in January until I found out they haven't even been delivered yet, but it looked so good. The, the ancillary equipment on, on those, on those vehicles, whether it's pumps or whatever, it's like any of us that own a boat. I mean, we're out there replacing either the components of the pumps or putting a new pump on, but you, you put it onto the boat, you don't go out and buy a new boat because your pumps are going bad. So I just don't understand what's going on unless the frames are cracking or something like that that means that the whole vehicle is useless, but I just don't understand why a fire, you know, a fire truck wouldn't last at least, at least 20 years and looking at a fire engine, you know, a fire engine at least 15 years. And then I look at the, well, the police patrol vehicles, looking at some of the mileages we've added on to others, so, you know, intuitively it seems to me that, you know, maybe 100,000 miles in five years would work there. And you can take that same line of thought and at some of these other categories and we could probably save quite a bit of money because the technology on motor vehicles has drastically improved since this policy was, was last officially adopted. And saving a million dollars is huge and we make some additional changes and can squeeze a little bit more out of it. It all just goes to help the general fund, which we know is all going to be challenged here in the coming years because we know that the contributions that we're going to have to make to Calpers is going up. So, you know, a million dollars, that's a big, big chunk of change. The other comment that I would, that I would make is why do we have a specialized garage for police vehicles? Why can't we maintain the police vehicles in the, in the general service garages? And it seems to me intuitively that that would provide a huge operational savings for the city rather than having two separate garages and duplicating overhead and other kinds of things. So those are some things that, that I'm concerned about. I'd actually like to see us do some more study on this. I'd also like to see what some other cities' reserve policies are. Quite frankly, some cities are not as in good financial shape as our city is, and so maybe they're waiting too long to replace their, their equipment. I get a little bit concerned that because we are so well off financially that we tend to maybe gold-plate this a little bit. I don't want to compromise public safety at all, so I want to make sure that we have that. But my way of thinking, I just think that this needs a little bit more work and we could probably squeeze some more savings out of it. Councilmember Petros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your comments. I, I wholeheartedly agree with you and I think what I'd like, pardon me, what I'd like to see back when this ripens to a council action is a comparison to what other cities are doing in terms of, are they purchasing the same type of equipment? And if they are, what are, what are other cities in the county doing in terms of their, their turnover? Anecdotally, I was just in Boston this weekend, there were fire trucks rolling down the, the street in service that looked like they had seen a lot of service and yet were still on the highway. So I think maybe we are gold-plating things a bit and would think we could maybe eke out a little more savings with a review of this when compared to other cities in the county.
Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on what the prior two council members said, compared to other cities, or if there's some sort of national template that's used or agency or metric we can measure the life of the vehicles from. Because I, I don't know how you got to these mileage numbers and these years. On one of them, actually, the, the life expectancy is reduced, the trailers. I don't, I don't know why it went from 12 to 10. I'm sure there's a reason behind it. But I'm guessing Newport is quicker to replace its equipment and I'd like to see what other cities are doing.
Okay, Councilmember Duffy.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I would agree with you, Mayor, that these things, well, everything you said essentially, but, you know, I'm wondering, you know, obviously things that are, have an expected life, you know, like a jet, you're not, it's X amount of hours and takeoffs and landings, you're, you're going to put that thing to bed no matter if it works perfectly. I'm not sure we have that type of equipment, other than the fire stuff, that needs to be considered like that. And I'm wondering, is there, I think it's a blend of what you're doing with expected life and then also it's a judgment call. At my factory, you know, we, we have tons of equipment and there's things there that, quite frankly, are older than I am. And there's some, not many, but there's, not many, but there are things there that don't last a minute and, and there's a blend, so it's a judgment call. When you look out, like, when you look at that fire truck and you can't tell if it's new or old, I mean, that's, that tells you right there. Now, if it, if, on the other hand, it doesn't pump, pump the gallons per minute that the new one does, I would be in favor of getting one that pumps faster if that's, if that's an important issue. So if technology has, is, has not caught up and the equipment looks great, I would have to say, is there a way to annually come up with an inventory inspection and let us know, hey, you know, these things are looking great, ooh, no, these things, these five items here are looking bad, versus just saying, on such and such a birthday, this trailer is no good anymore. Also, you've got some boats here. I don't believe there's a large, what is it, we've got some, a large emergency boat? I don't think we have a large emergency boat. And the small boats, I guess you're considering that, the boats we teach sailing in or something like that, I don't know. But to my knowledge, we don't have a lot of boats. The Harbor Patrol, the Sheriff's Department has a lot of boats, but I don't think we do. Anyway, those are my comments.
Mayor Protem Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I guess just to more or less echo what everyone is saying, I question too, it seems rather arbitrary, 75,000 miles or four years, maybe it should be based on miles and with a vehicle inspection to determine its lifespan as it is. I, I just think it's kind of arbitrary. So I would assume it's the sooner of the lesser, it's four years, if automatically that anniversary date gets rolled out. So I'd like to know, and maybe this is what's standard practice in replacing vehicles. To follow up what the mayor said earlier in his comments, I commend you for finding a million dollars. I think that's fantastic. I guess I would say, can we look for 500,000 more? And just to use that as a goal, what would it take in terms of adjusting these thresholds to save another $500,000? Maybe come back to us with that. And also on the lifeguard, Dave, you know, you and I talked about this, are there automobile companies that would be willing to supply us some lifeguard vehicles for free in exchange for allowing us, giving permission to those companies to use the city of Newport Beach photographs, not put any logos on our vehicles, but to allow them to advertise in their national advertising programs that they are, that their products are being used by the city of Newport Beach or any of these vehicles? So where we can do some cross-marketing to our advantage, maybe we could look at that. Thanks.
Councilmember Pieter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like all the ideas of cost savings. One of the other things that I, I know that Irvine did, because I, and I use them as an example because I was on the planning commission there for eight years, but they actually had an operation, and I don't even know if they're still doing it, where they would, basically their police cars, their patrol cars were leased and basically they had a performance lease. Hey, we want to be able to have this many cars on the road at any given time. And then the company that had the award, in this case, I think it was Tuttle Click, you know, if they needed 10 cars to keep eight cars on the road, you know, we left it up to them. And if they had a lot of downtime and they needed to put more cars out there in order to make sure we had a certain number of cars in, in service, that was up to them. And the routine as far as how often they maintained it, again, was up to them. You know, we cooperated with and made sure that the cars that needed to be serviced got serviced. But I'd love to explore other options like that because the private sector could sit there and say, hey, look, we've got these fleet programs and if we put them on this kind of a maintenance program, they last longer, we can get them to do and perform what we need to without having the downtime that, let's say, cars 20 years ago or 30 years ago used to have. So I'd love to see us explore other options along those lines too. Thank you.
Councilmember Curry.
Well, I also think this is a, this is a great start and I really want to associate myself with Mayor Selich's comments because I think he really hit the nail on the head in terms of where we need to go, in terms of next steps. And I think the most important thing he, he mentioned was the need to rationalize our fleet maintenance internally between having a separate police maintenance for vehicles and internal maintenance at MOD. And, you know, this is a service that could be done at some of the local dealerships for certain, certain things and some things we can do in-house, but we ought to be much more rational about how we do it and break down some of the little kingdoms that, that come with that because those are costs we don't need to incur. I'm not sure that leasing automobiles for 100,000 miles is an appropriate way to go. I think the math on that really doesn't work. But, but I think, you know, moving further, as has been suggested by our colleagues here and certainly by Mayor Selich, and looking at the maintenance is where we'll find additional savings.
Councilmember Duffy.
Sorry, I had a little brain fade there. Obviously, we have lifeguard boats, so I, I saw the word emergency boat, so that derailed me, so I take it back.
Mayor Protem Dixon.
One other question. Didn't we talk in the finance committee about the vehicles serving, fleet servicing and maybe seeing it as a revenue center and servicing other agencies outside of the city of Newport Beach since we might have a capacity opportunity there?
You did. You, you, I think we, we're having you look at at least three different areas and this would be a fourth, which is fine because I think you've all expressed a similar concern. What I might recommend, if you don't mind, to achieve the budget savings that have been identified, we need to adopt the policy. And, but, but let's consider that a work in progress and a direction by your council to address the issues that you've raised, either with a, maybe a third-party study to look at those different vari, because I, I think you've, you've raised some intriguing things that in mine, I think when I first came to the city almost 20 years ago, there was a fleet study going on. I think that may have been the last time we did it, so let's take a look at that again.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that we not adopt this, just, but adopt it, but let's take it a step further.
Okay.
Because like you said, if we don't adopt it, we don't achieve that million-dollar million-dollar year savings. Okay, any comments from the public? Please come forward.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As Director Pizzani alluded to, I think part of the confusion here is that this table of expected service lives has two quite separate and distinct uses. One of them is a guideline for the city finance department to prudently set aside enough money, so that when a vehicle needs to be replaced, there will be the money available to replace it. Completely separate from that is using the guidelines to decide whether you're actually going to replace the vehicle when you have the money set aside. The first of those aspects has been emphasized by inserting the word "funding" here at the beginning of the policy, saying it's now, it's providing guidance for funding of the replacement. But if you go to the last page of the policy, in the first line of it, and you try to read through the redlining, you will see the policy, it's already written, says as far as using the guidelines for replacement, it currently just says that after the milestones are reached, the department will inspect the equipment annually to determine the appropriateness of replacing. So some of that equipment, if it looks new and is still functioning well, could last long beyond the time that has been set aside for saving the money. So perhaps that revision was not one that you want to make here, this redlining on the last page, and you want to leave it something much closer to the way it is now. At least, that seems to be what you're all saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, so, go ahead.
Mayor Pro-Tim Dixon alluded to it. These are basically minimum replacement timeframes. I know for a fact, police patrol cars are going out between 85 and 100,000 miles. We've extended most of the other categories of items in our fleet, from heavy equipment, et cetera. Trailers went down because of just rust issues in this environment. And so, at 10 years, we really need to start looking at them. This is basically driven more significantly by maintenance. The last, you know, 15% to 20% of vehicle or pieces of equipment life, when it gets up around these milestones, requires considerably more maintenance. And as we've trimmed staff, both, you know, in our shop, and sent more items out to get repaired, you know, we do really concentrate on keeping the equipment with minimal downtime, and get as much life as we can from that. One of the issues we have, in general, our shop at the Corporation Yard is basically a heavy equipment shop. We do some light vehicles from City Hall here, but the majority of equipment they work on is fire equipment, vectors, dump trucks for our operations. We don't spend a whole lot of effort on light-duty vehicles. By and large, they go up to 100,000 miles, they don't require too much work, they get sent out if they do. There aren't a lot of truck shops, fire shops working on fire equipment, most of them are up in Ontario, Fontana area. You know, when we do have to send items up, it takes a long time to get them there, they're there a long time. For fire equipment, we don't have that many spares. So that's just some of the issues that we deal with on a, you know, daily, weekly basis, that is kind of part of the picture, too, why these dates and mileages are as they are. I just want to get that.
Good information, but I think the sense, the direction of the council is, let's try and do a little bit better, and squeeze a little bit more out.
I understand.
Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Public comments. The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, any public comments?
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name once more is Jim Mosher. You may or may not have noticed, I've been showing admirable restraint in not commenting on the closed session for a number of months. But as you may know, I am not a big believer in secrecy, and there were a couple items on this closed-session agenda that has caught my attention. The first one is your item B, which is a conference with real property negotiators about property on Zenith Avenue. Zenith Avenue happens to be in Santa Ana Heights, and this is a property that about 15 years ago was leased from the county for use as a temporary fire station. And the negotiation here, you're talking again with the county about price and terms of payment. Just occurs to me that when both parties are public agencies, I don't know whose privacy is being protected by talking about the item in private, and whether there is a good reason for that or not, I would think the public would at least be entitled to know whether what you're talking about is leasing or buying the property, and why in the heck are we interested in this property. Second item that I want to comment on is item C, conference with legal counsel about Woody's Group litigation. This is clearly very closely connected, I would think, to item 16 on your regular agenda, which is a new conditional use permit for the Woody's Wharf property. And actually, in the resolution here, if one reads the whereas, is it cites this exact case with the exact case number that I see in the closed-session agenda. And it tells me, a member of the public, that the Woody's people with this case challenged the city council's November 12, 2013 decision. I go, two more whereas is down, and it tells me, on January 29, the appeals court overturned that decision, reinstated the Planning Commission decision of September 5. Sounds like the litigation is over with, but apparently, the litigation is still lingering on. And I would guess, I do not know what happens in closed session, you're discussing what would be the ramifications of approving or not approving this conditional use permit. I would think it's really of interest to the public to know how this affects litigation, and it's not mentioned here. We would, in fact, think the litigation has gone away, and apparently, it has not. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any comments on the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Selich. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss items 4A through C on the regular agenda, including meeting with Dave Kiff, Carol Jacobs, and Terry Cassidy regarding labor negotiations with all representative employees, meeting with Dave Kiff, Carol Jacobs, and Lauren Whitlinger, to get direction from the council regarding negotiations related to the properties at 2301, 2331 Zenith Avenue, and 2332 Southeast Bristol Street with the County of Orange, and finally, meeting with legal counsel to discuss the litigation title, Woody's Group, Inc. versus the city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
I'll reconvene the regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council for October 13, 2015. Can we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Closed-session report, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, we do have a closed-session report this evening regarding Woody's Wharf. The city council has accepted a settlement offer from Woody's Group, Inc. to settle the litigation between the parties. pursuant to the terms of the settlement agreement, which is now available to the public, and I put copies of the settlement agreement outside, the city will pay Woody's $355,000. The agreement will only become effective if the city council agrees to amend the conditional use permit, which regulates Woody's operations. The motion approving the settlement agreement was made by Councilmember Pieter and seconded by Mayor Selich. Voting in favor of the motion were Councilmembers Muldoon, as well as Councilmember Duffield. And voting against the motion were Mayor Pro-Tim Dixon and Councilmembers Curry and Petros. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Pieter, followed by the invocation by Pastor Jack West from Aron's Church of Irvine?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me? We pause now to acknowledge that we, in this chamber and on this council, yield to a power greater than us. And to that end, we would like to start these proceedings with a sense of humility, and an urgent need to be centered on the tasks at hand. So we ask that this chamber would be filled with wisdom, as we seek to govern in fairness and love. We acknowledge that we seek discernment, to understand the difference between what is good and what is best. And we ask for help to enter into the discussions that will happen here tonight with deference, honoring differences, maintaining civility, even when we have differences, and just having open, fluid communication. And we acknowledge also that we need one another to govern. So help us be responsible tonight to one another in this community. And for those that are vulnerable and weak, those that are discarded, those that are on the margins, those to whom we are responsible for as a community, help us to make wise decisions for them. Above all, help us to love mercy, to seek justice, and with all our might, help us to love one another, as we have been charged to lead this community. Amen.
Thank you. We're going to go off agenda a little bit here this evening. We have a certificate of appreciation that we'd like to present to Hugh Logan. Hugh Logan has just completed eight years of service in our Civil Service Board, and it certifies that we recognize his community service on behalf of the citizens of the city of Newport Beach. So Hugh, would you like to come forward, make a few remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Hugh Logan. I guess we're supposed to say that when we come up here. I apologize to the council and to the staff. When you're retired, you know, fours look like sevens. So I made the mistake of thinking it was this evening, but I apologize again to you all. And I had a great honor of serving for eight years, and I hope I did some good. So thank you all very much. It was a great privilege.
Okay, thank you, Hugh. If you want to come over by the flag, we'll take a picture of this. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements.
Okay, Councilmember Pieter. Councilmember Petros.
I would just like to report that the October 2 movie in the park at Cliff Drive Park, where we watched Frankenweenie and ate Dogzilla hot dogs, was a overwhelming success. Families from throughout the Heights came and brought their dogs, some costumed, to watch the movie. There were, I would have to say, about 100 people or more out on the lawn there to enjoy a movie night. So to our Parks and Rec Department, thank you so much. Laura, your team was outstanding out there. It was a great night. Popcorn, candy, games, just a wonderful evening of the community coming together for the only purpose of having fun.
You know, I missed Frankenweenie this year. Is it available on Netflix?
I think so.
Okay, thanks. Mayor Pro-Tim Dixon.
Please, thank you, Mayor. I want to comment on a historic event that occurred last week in Long Beach at a meeting, a regular meeting of the California Coastal Commission. And the commissioners approved the Lido House Hotel, and it's a great day for Newport Beach, a great day for Balboa Peninsula, and a great day for Lido Village in particular. I want to extend my sincere thanks and appreciation and recognition to city staff, Dave Kiff, Community Development under Kim Brant, and Jim Campbell, Parks and Recreation under Laura Detweiler, for coming forward with a very creative plan related to fostering interest in nature as a low-cost visitor-serving amenity to accompany the development of the Lido House Hotel, very creative, and received kudos from the Coastal Commission staff itself. Speaking on behalf of the residents of District 1 and Balboa Peninsula, this is a transformative event. The residents, long before I've been involved in the community, have been working tirelessly, passionately, to protect that site, which housed the city hall for many decades. decades, and has been now destined to be a beautiful boutique hotel. And I thank the residents for working so hard and so, in such a committed way. Denise Oberman and many others who really believe strongly that a hotel was the best use for that property, and it is the right use and will be a success for our community. It is transformative for our community, and to see this type of development complementing the other development that is going on at Lido and Newport Marina, it's really an exciting, transformative time for Balboa Peninsula. I also want to congratulate the developer Bob Olson, who stayed committed to his original vision of a quality boutique hotel, and I'm grateful for what his investment is going to be in our community, and I'm grateful that he is committed to making the best it can be in our community. So, thank you, staff. Thank you, community. Thank you, residents. Thank you, Bob Olson. And thank you also to the prior council, who got us here, and the leadership of the prior council, who listened to the residents and saw that vision and will allow this dream to come true. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. Yes, I had the opportunity to travel to San Jose for the League of Cities, along with Councilman Curry, who was there as well, and I learned a lot about the technology that's coming to our communities that, for me, is the most exciting and I think is going to change the future of cities. Also, I attended the Pizza Bar grand opening on the peninsula. For those of you who don't know, it's been covered recently, Daily Pilot. The Pizza Bar is a location dedicated to serving the hearing impaired, and they do so by providing a kiosk that has on-demand sign language available from a virtual attendant, who then communicates with a local barkeep or waiter to tell them what the order of the hearing-impaired patron is. And it was very moving. Some people cried because they never had that kind of service before. There is a very easy way to have it be involved in our services in the city. They'd be very inexpensive. It would only consist of the actual time of communicating with the interpreter, and it could possibly use with first responders, with smartphones. So, the city manager, Mr. Kiff, and I are working that together, and if you're interested, please swing by the Pizza Bar just to see it yourself. It's pretty amazing. Thank you.
Councilmember Duffy.
Well, not much goes on in my district, but I will say that the conclusion of Dover Drive construction is inches away, and the staff, Dave, all you guys, that's been something because it is one of our main arteries, and it is one of the streets that, as you enter Newport from Costa Mesa, and it is going to be something that we can all be proud of. It has, we've endured two years plus of a water main, and, I mean, I've driven that road all the time, and so to see that in a few weeks or less, hopefully less, it finally coming to an end, and we will actually have no more cones and construction vehicles and things, is exciting. However, I do know, I want to warn everybody that that will become the artery for bypassing the Coast Highway for the winter while we're all trying to avoid the single-lane closures for the sewer pipe. But at least it will be pretty. So, the drive will be nice. Thank you.
Councilmember Curry.
A couple of things. First of all, along with my friend, Councilman Muldoon, I had the opportunity also to attend the League of Cities meeting in San Jose, and I sat through a couple of excellent presentations, one by Greg Lucas. Greg is a noted California journalist who is the new state librarian, and Greg gave, I thought, a very, very forward-thinking talk about the future of libraries in the 21st century, the value for communities, how they're being used, the differences from how they've been used in the past, that I think has great relevance for our community. I'd love to see us invite Greg down. I know he's making a tour of libraries throughout California. We also had panels on millennial employees and the differences in terms of their work styles and how that works with the baby boomers who are retiring, the usual programs on pensions, which is a critical issue for all of California, and talk on reform of fire operations, how fire departments can work in the 21st century as they do more EMS service in a way that's more cost-effective and efficient. I would also make note of what's going on now at the Great Park in the city of Irvine, which is the solar decathlon. I had the opportunity to go there this weekend. There are teams of university students from all over the world who have built solar-driven homes that show some of the really important innovations, energy savings, water conservation, construction to withstand natural disasters. It's really something to see. It's going to be going on next weekend, so I encourage you to go out to the Great Park. It's free to go. It's $10 to park, but check it out. We learned some things. You'll see your first, if you haven't seen a 3D printer, it's something to see. But great technology. I like to kid my wife. I've been to the future, and it looks like they shop at IKEA, but I think you'll find it to be a lot of fun. And then finally, I'm very happy to announce that the city has won another award. The Municipal Information Systems Association of California, which was founded in 1980 out of a need for collaboration and data sharing with 600-plus members, has given us the Mises Innovation Award. Each year, this award recognizes outstanding efforts and innovative solutions by an agency. This award is given to the agency that's done something to improve their services and achieved a positive impact and result in the community. We won this for our What's Happening in My Neighborhood map that shows residents' location and the types of police calls, fire response, building permits, CIP projects, planning activities happening throughout the city. So, congratulations to everyone involved in IT at the city. This really does show that Newport Beach is continuing to take the lead in using technology to make our city more effective and more efficient. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, one of the highlights of the three weeks since our last council meeting was I got to help the Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club celebrate some remodeling of the club, their patio and an elevator they installed, and in fact, 11 people entered a raffle to have the mayor drive them up and down the elevator, and I actually found my true calling in life. I should have been an elevator operator, except I don't think those jobs exist anymore, do they?
[laughing]
I also want to echo what Mayor Protem Dixon said about the Lido House Hotel. I was with her and our staff at the Coastal Commission meeting last week, and in addition to what she said, I just have to say, Dave, congratulations to you and your staff for coming up with that very creative and innovative idea. I go to so many Coastal Commission meetings, and very few project applicants are able to come up with a program dealing with affordable accommodations that the staff in the Coastal Commission will actually accept. So, it's quite an accomplishment in your part, and congratulations. And then on the 10th Sunday, I attended, with my wife Lynn, the Art Foundation, Art in the Civic Green here at the park, exhibition they had, an art-for-sale, and it was a terrific day, although it was hotter than heck out there. So, it was, but they really had a lot of great art there, and it's a great event they put on every year, and they do contribute the proceeds to the city for the furtherance of arts in our community. Also, on November the 7th, we're going to have a free document shredding program. The city and CRNR, our trash and waste hauler, are offering free document shredding, and it's going to be again on Saturday, November the 7th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon in the parking lot of Mariners Elementary at 2100 Mariners Drive. Newport Beach residents that receive trash and recycling service from CRNR are welcome to bring their documents and junk mail, and who doesn't get a lot of that for shredding. So, for more information, please contact CRNR customer service at 877-728-0446. That's 877-728-0446. Now, on a more serious note, not too long ago, we had a serious incident on Balboa Island. Balboa Island, as many people know, has the, probably the highest concentration of golf carts in the city, and a golf cart was not being operated properly, and a child was injured. And we had a town hall meeting at the fire station a few weeks ago to talk about golf carts on Balboa Island, and the police department was there to discuss what the golf cart rules were and what they weren't, and quite frankly, there's a lot of confusion over it. You have golf carts, you have low-speed electric vehicles, you have neighborhood electric vehicles. They're regulated by state law, they're regulated by federal law. The laws aren't always totally clear, but golf carts are a good means of transportation in some of our more crowded areas of Newport Beach, such as Balboa Island. And what I'd like to have brought back to council for consideration is the possible development of what's called a golf cart transportation plan. It's something that many cities do. If you go out to the Coachella Valley, virtually every city in the Coachella Valley has a golf cart transportation plan that sets up rules, procedures, and facilities for golf carts to be used as transportation, as well as neighborhood electric vehicles and low-speed electric vehicles. So, I'd like to have that come back for council consideration. So, our next item is matters which councils have asked to be on a future agenda. So, is there a motion to accept the strategies to reduce traffic conflicts on oceanfront walkways for Suri Segways, skateboards, and electric bikes? Mayor Protem Dixon?
I move.
Okay, do we have a second? No? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we're going to take our first motion to adopt on our new system here. Remember, you only click once. If you click twice, you withdraw your motion.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
That's fast.
Successful. Very nice. I like that screen.
Fast.
And fast. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Public comments. This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. The city council, oh, it, on my end, I got confused. The public are invited to speak on each of the items for up to three minutes. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. So, we'll take public comments on the consent calendar. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. Okay, seeing no public comments, Councilmember Muldoon, anything to pull from the consent calendar?
Just no votes and recusals.
Okay, go ahead and state the items, please.
Thank you. So, this is my first time doing it this way. I'll be voting no on items four and 15, and I'll be recusing myself for financial purposes on item eight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Duffy.
I too will be voting no on four and 18, and that's all.
15, I think you mean, correct. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Curry.
I'll note a recusal on item eight. I have an AT&amp;T stockholder conflict on that, and I'll pull item 12.
Thank you. Councilmember Pieter.
Vote no on four and 15.
Okay. Councilmember Petros?
I'd like to pull item 14, please.
Mayor Protem Dixon?
Nothing.
And I have nothing.
Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of the consent calendar, items 1 through 15, with the exceptions of items 12 and 14, which have been pulled. Item eight, which has been recused by councilmembers Muldoon and Curry. Item four, recording a no vote by councilmembers Muldoon, Duffy, and Pieter. Item 15, recording a no vote by councilmembers Muldoon, Pieter, and Duffy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero. Oh, sorry, prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for item three and four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach extending section 12.32.022 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code prohibiting commercial vehicles over 8,000 pounds on Ridge Park Road between Newport Coast Drive and Vista Ridge Road. And for item four, ordinance number 2015-29, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach amending Exhibit A to Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030, related to cost recovery, an ordinance number 2015-30, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach amending Chapter 5.60 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code for paramedic service user fees.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number 12. That's appointment of a new finance committee member to fill an unscheduled vacancy. Councilmember Curry, you pulled that item?
I did. I think here we have yet another example of Mr. Pieter, who's trying to politicize the finance committee. I think it's important for us to stop, and let's review the history of his efforts to put political appointees on the finance committee. First, we had Mr. Wu, who is a self-admitted embezzler, to the tune of $170,000, who was forced to resign from the committee. Now, his primary qualification appeared to be that he was a political supporter of Mr. Pieter, and that he'd been a critic of the previous council, and I think we can now evaluate his criticisms as having the same level of dishonesty as his actions in being the accountant for Congressman Rohrbacher. Clearly, that was not a good choice. Mr. Pieter's appointee was found not to be a registered voter. There's only one minimum qualifications in the city charter to be appointed to a committee, and that is that you be a registered voter, and the person whom we're replacing tonight was not at the time of his appointment. Apparently, he found a way to get an affidavit of being registered on Sunday before the Tuesday appointment, but he is now leaving the committee, having not met the minimum qualifications. We find that none of these appointees, other than Mr. Selich's appointee, actually live in the districts in which they represent. In Mr. Pieter's case, it's unlikely that he may know anybody in Corona del Mar since he just moved there from Irvine last year. Now, I have a great respect for Mr. Mosher. He's polite, he's witty, he's a concerned citizen, he's very sincere in what he wants to do. But as someone who speaks on many issues, he, like us, has developed a record, and I think if we're all honest, everyone except perhaps Mr. Pieter, believes that he's sincerely wrong on the issues, and many of the facts concerning our city and his advocated positions that would be counterproductive to a well-managed city. I personally hope Jim stays active as an outside watchdog, which is what he's very good at, and in fact, even in his own comments, he noted that he's not, does not meet the qualifications as delineated in the council policy, and raises concerns about the Brannick and how that might inhibit him from attending meetings and participating further up, something we really hadn't thought about. Now, this idea was really dreamed up by Dave Ellis and the cigar circle over at Gulfstream to cause more havoc in the city, and what we need to do is follow the process, have people apply for the committee, have them go through the interview process like we normally do, and then let's have someone come on the committee. And I would, by the way, note that the appointees on the committee, I see Mr. O'Neill is here, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Warner, have all been diligent people who have been focused on the issues, who have got into the numbers, who have thought about it well, and frankly, have made better recommendations than some of the people who have appointed them here in terms of how they vote. So, I look forward to their participation, of serious people who want to do that. We need to diminish the politicization of this committee.
Did you have a motion to go with that, or?
Nope.
No? Okay. Okay. Any other speakers want to comment? If not, we'll open it to public comment. Oh, Kevin Muldoon, Kevin, go ahead. Okay. Any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Selich, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. It may not have been totally apparent from Councilman Curry's comments, but I am the subject of the discussion. I wanted to make clear, number one, I am a registered voter. Number two, I have no political affiliation with Mr. Pieter, and I do not believe I share many of his views on financial matters. I had myself wished that the position had been more widely advertised. I had been hoping that Bill Gross or Don Brenn might apply to volunteer, but they have not. So, kind of think you have to work with what you have, but I am open to the idea of your re-advertising the position, but if I was appointed tonight, I would promise to do a good job on the committee. Thank you.
Jim, I will say that you've had a better year than Bill Gross this year.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, no closed public comments. Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. I've been conflicted by this. Jim, you're such a nice guy. You're a very kind person. I don't see the position as being very fitting for someone who is essentially a rocket scientist, or in the field you are in. You're a very accomplished engineer. It's a finance position, but I enjoy your comments too much to vote against you, but I will be abstaining in this vote.
Councilmember Pieter. Okay, Councilmember Pieter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm more than happy and very proud to nominate Jim to be my Finance Commissioner. I don't know too many people outside of city staff that know the budget as well as Jim knows it. He's taken the time and dedication to understand the minutia of the budget, and we need people that are committed and have the time to be able to do that. It's not a political appointee, as Jim said, he has not donated to my campaign, and we are in disagreement in some of the financial issues. But he's a, he's a good, upright, moral guy who speaks his mind, is not afraid to do that, and I don't think that, I think the Finance Committee will benefit from that. I do resent Mr. Curry's politicization of the appointee and besmirching Jim's name because it's not, implying that anybody and everybody that gets appointed is political, or that, you know, Jack Wu's embezzlement, who, you know, was not my appointee, had anything to do with Finance Committee. My appointee, Bill McCullough, was a good guy that understood a lot of finance, but he has other business obligations, and Mr. Curry, as chairman of the committee, seems to not be able to find a regular time to meet, and so it, because of the time moving around so often, he was unable to attend too many of the meetings. So I'm glad to have Jim on board, and I'd love to have the council's support on that, and be glad to make a motion for approval of item number twelve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second?
Have a second. Mayor Pro Tim Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too think, Jim, you provide a vital service to our discussions, and you are consistent and diligent in pointing out areas where you believe the council should improve its process, procedures, and decision-making. I value that, and I think we see the value of many of your ideas and have incorporated them. One of the fundamental requirements that I supported at the beginning of this year when we changed the appointment process for members of the Finance Committee to bring on the citizens, it was very important to me, because of the issues that came up in the last election about city finances, et cetera, that I really believe strongly that incorporate it now in the requirements, that we now require an individual to have professionally served in a financial-oriented position for 15 or 20 years. Mr. Kip, isn't that correct? I think that's what we've required, at least there had, it's more than 10 years of a financial, professional financial experiences in either financial accounting or chief financial officer-type roles and responsibilities in either public or private enterprise. For that reason, I will be voting against Mr. Mosher's appointment, while he is very esteemed in his field as literally a rocket scientist, a physicist, with excellent academic credentials. I really feel for managing the budget of our size of our city, we need that financial acumen, and that's critical to my decision this evening. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further requests to speak, please vote.
With councilmembers Curry, Selich, Dixon, and Petros voting no, and Councilmember Muldoon abstaining, the motion fails.
Okay, we'll move on to item number fourteen. This is the urban water management plan. Councilmember Petros, you pulled this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, here in the media, and it seems the media loves to use the city as a punching bag on this, about how the City of Newport Beach has failed to meet its water-saving rationing percentages in the last couple of months. And it's always that kind of amorphous "the city of Newport Beach," the city. And I've received a number of emails saying that the city should do more, and as well we should. The municipal operations of Newport Beach should carry the weight for, and be a shining example to the residents, businesses, and visitors of how to conserve that very precious resource, water. But let's make no mistake, the city of Newport Beach are the residents, businesses, and visitors who come here. And the greatest percentage reduction in the use of that resource that we could ever hope to get is by you, doing what you can. So much in the way of one of those fundraising canes that you see, you know, as you go up and down. What I'd like to see, or George, can you somehow respond to this or come back to us with, is on a monthly basis or on a reporting basis, whenever we get the reports for what the city did, and hopefully we'll be getting some good news, could we also see some measure of how our, our end-users, our residents, are doing as well? Not by individuals, not by districts, not, nothing like that, but the city made 25% this month. Forty percent of our residents complied with their individual needs, so that we can see how our residents are doing, and that might also help them to understand just how important it is for them to participate in this, and when they don't, what that means to us achieving our goals. This isn't punitive, it's not to call anybody out, but I think using it properly, it'll help us understand and get the public along with us to make some change here.
Mayor Pro Tim Dixon? Oh, no, you're still up there.
Oh, no, it's from last time.
Yeah, okay, didn't clear it. Okay.
Otherwise, Mr. Mayor, if there's no other comments, I would move the item, but is that something, George, that is possible to do in reporting periods?
Certainly, yes. And we do it by customer class, so single-family, multifamily, commercial, and then, of course, sprinkler accounts. But yes, we can separate those out and bring back a report on how we're doing monthly. But you point out some good things. We did really good in June. You know, July, we hit our target, but August, September, you know, we need to step it up. So we're falling behind.
And I'm not suggesting, George, that we parse it down to a certain level, because I don't want to pit one neighbor over another, the renter over the owner, the, just a global notion so that our public can know how much they're helping getting their shoulder into this thing.
Sure, and we need to know that, too. And I think, as you pointed out, 19,000 of our 26,000 connections are single-family homes. So we need to know that, too, but happy to bring that up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, did you want to make a motion to approve that item?
I believe I did. I'll move the, move the action.
Okay, we have a second. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, any public comments on non-agenda items? Sir, can I remind you to keep your comments within our jurisdiction, and if you wouldn't mind, pay a little bit more attention to your language?
Sure. Hello, members of council, I'm Wayne Harropson from Fountain Valley. Over the last few meetings, I've been driving home the point that the council owes Councilman Pieter an apology for its attempt to censure him for taking the only moral and responsible position a grown-up can take regarding the Supreme Court decision on same-sex marriage. The example I was given, straight from Hollywood, made the point better than anything I could have dreamt up on my own. What a fantastic illustration that joke was. I won't repeat it now, but anyone that hasn't heard it may view it on Harropson Channel on YouTube. That's H-A-R-R-O-P-S-O-N. It's pretty easy to find. It's not so much that it's funny, rather disgusting. It was pretty difficult for me even to restate it. The problem is, it was absolutely true. It's the kind of truth that everyone acknowledges inwardly, but is bound by political correctness to somehow feign neutrality. Mark this time in the history of Newport Beach, whether you've allowed the impact of the gravity of the offense to Scott Pieter to sink in to your conscious mind, mark my words, that you most certainly will in time. What was witnessed in this chamber was every bit as momentous as a city clerk in Kim Davis being thrown in jail. You were participating in Christian persecution, whether you realized it at the time or not. Now, after all I've said, I think it's remarkable that no one, but no one, has ever uttered that adolescent, schoolyard bully taunt, in my presence at least, not about me. I'm talking about that ridiculous term homophobic. I think there's a reason for that. People may apply it to others to bully them and manipulate them, but dare not apply it to my argument. There's no phobia here, and every honest adult knows it. If there is a phobia, it's the fear of sodomy recruitment of the innocent. And everyone in this room should acquire such a phobia. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker's coming. I just noticed that the Dodgers are ahead three to one in the bottom of the eighth with two outs.
Okay, thank you for that update. Okay, any other speakers on public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, you're gonna, Jim, just don't sit there waiting to be the last, last guy. Get up.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Since the clerk is going to have to re-notice the vacancy about the Finance Committee, I think I have the right to set the record straight that the guidance in your most recent enabling resolution recommending financial or business experience is just that, it's guidance, it's a recommendation, and is not a requirement. But I do hope when the, when the position is advertised, the requirements for the job will be clearly delineated in the advertisement. What I wanted to speak about was the rollout of the new agenda and apparently voting system that we're witnessing tonight, and with regard to that, I wanted actually to commend the city staff on being extraordinarily responsive to suggestions for improvement of that system. One I would like to point out to the people who are viewing at home, although I don't usually speak to them, is that there is now on the new agenda system a capability of pushing a single button and getting the packet that you would find in the lobby all nicely collated and assembled in a single file with bookmarks in it. I think that's a very useful feature, and it makes the meetings and the meeting content more accessible to the public than it was before. I also want to commend them for their continuing effort, without any direction from the City Council or actually from the public, continuing effort to collate the agendas and minutes from the many board and commission meetings that take place into the city in a single searchable database. I think that is also very useful, not only for the city staff, but for the public interesting, interest in what happens. Among the city documents, as you may know, there are a great many policies which have been left as a legacy to you by past city councils, some of which kind of get a little dusty and forgotten, and I wanted to point out to you and to the city staff a policy A nine, A dash nine, called City Council Committees. Some of these actually past councils have left directives to you and the city staff, and that one leaves to you a directive in October of each year to review the city's committee structure. Whether any changes should be made to it, it's very nice that the city staff is putting out a tentative agenda for what will happen at the next meeting, but October is going to go by in that review of the city committee structure. According to the policy A nine, I don't see it listed here, and in that same regard, if you looked at the comments I made on the minutes, there seems to be an ever-expanding list of things that you from the dais have asked to be brought back at future council meetings that have so far not been brought back, and I think would be very useful on the tentative agenda to keep kind of a little ledger of promises of things that were to come back, so at least they're not completely forgotten. Thank you.
Any other speakers on public comments, non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Councilmember Pieter? Councilmember Petros?
We had an aviation committee meeting on the 28th of September. It was very well-attended. More than 100 people were in the committee room, or the community room, to discuss issues related to the operation of the John Wayne Airport, both now and proposals by the FAA into the future. As a result of those two meetings, the council had a study session tonight, or this afternoon, related to that matter, and quite possibly will be looking into some actions into the future based on the actions of the FAA and their movements into that. I would also be remiss if I didn't point out that on the 4th of October, I was also honored to be a judge in the sandcastle contest down at Big Corona. Heavy weight on my shoulders to judge the almost two dozen sandcastles out there. What a wonderful gathering of the community to get out there and enjoy a summer day, everything from the kids putting together sandcastles, to families, to the elderly. It was, it was a wonderful, wonderful afternoon.
Mayor Pro Tim Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce tomorrow afternoon, 4:00 PM, the Balboa Village Advisory Committee will be meeting at the old City Council, Council Chambers, and for, and the report of the outside consultant on establishing the viability of a trolley system on the peninsula will be presented, and I encourage anyone with interest in that topic to attend our meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Councilmember Muldoon? Councilmember Duffy?
I do, I attended a field trip for the watershed committee, which I am on, and actually, I got a great debriefing from the former member, Nancy Gardner, and she was a great member of that, helping us to reduce the amount of sediment and toxins that reach our harbor. And also, Dave Webb has helped me to understand this, this position. I want you to know, though, the watershed is all about the upstream before the waters reach our harbor, and I've been all involved in the harbor. And it's extremely important and exciting to know that we actually have some influence on the upstream waters that come into our harbor. As you may know, the algae that was growing in our harbor was horrific, actually, for many years, and as a result of the watershed, folks, they, the ponds that they have installed up by UCI are very, very effective. I'm excited to do more of that, learn more about that. These folks are very smart, they use long words, but I'm telling you that my role will be to continue to hammer them and to understand that while we're the recipients of all this, you know, they're not so attentive when it comes to helping out with us. And so what I've learned is, for example, I've already contacted the county, Nelson and Michelle Steele, Sean Nelson, so offices to let them know that our culverts up on the San Diego Creek are full of sediment and debris and need to be cleaned out. are full of sediment and debris and need to be cleaned out as quickly as possible before this rain event occurs, if it does. And they are receptive to my calls, and they are working on that. And I'll be receiving information about that shortly. So that's really going to be my role, is to keep hammering them, to understand the importance that what ends up in our bay is important to us. And if we can defer it, and we can, especially with trash, et cetera, sediment, and toxins, it's a great thing to do. So I'm proud to be on that, and I will continue to work hard on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry?
The Finance Committee will meet Thursday at 4:00 PM.
Okay, and I have no reports this evening. So we'll move on to public hearings. Our first public hearing this evening is item number 16. Excuse me, Woody's Wharf Conditional Use Permit, located at 2318 Newport Boulevard. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Selich, members of the City Council. I'm Greg Ramirez with the City's Planning Division, and I'll provide a brief staff report on Woody's Wharf's request for an amendment to their conditional use permit. This here is a vicinity map, just to remind everybody where Woody's Wharf is, located along Newport Boulevard. Newport Bay Marina, which is currently under construction, is located directly to the south. Another major development, a mixed-use development, is 28th Street Marina Project, which is to the north. And this map also shows the residential district across Newport and Balboa and the nearby municipal parking lot. This here is just a site plan of Woody's. It shows the parking lot that fronts Newport Boulevard and the building, which is approximately 3,300 square feet, which is located toward the rear of the property, abutting the harbor. So their request, I'll go over the requested items briefly here. The first request is to extend the opening hour of the restaurant in the interior and the exterior patios from 10:00 AM, which is the present opening hour that is allowed to 9:30 AM daily. They'd also like to extend the closing hour of the restaurant's outdoor dining area from 11:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Thursdays. This would match what's already allowed for Friday and Saturday nights. Additionally, they would like to have the ability to stay open until 2:00 AM on 12 additional nights per year. This would be at their discretion. A condition of approval is included that requires them to notify the Community Development Director 24 hours in advance of staying up in those evenings. Another request is to allow a small, a narrow, easterly outdoor area that kind of runs the property line between the building and the Marina Project next door to be used as an outdoor patio area till 8:00 PM daily. Another request is to allow patron dancing in the interior of the restaurant only on Thursday nights. Again, this is already allowed by the current use permit on Friday and Saturday nights. And they also request the same discretionary, 12 additional nights per year, with the same requirement to notify the Community Development Director prior to staying open, or prior to having dancing on those nights. And just to remind everybody, live entertainment is already allowed nightly. They're not requesting that, but I thought I'd remind everyone that they are allowed to do that currently. This here is a floor plan of Woody's, again, to remind everybody. Oops. So this area right here is the outdoor patio. And here is the interior of the restaurant here. There you go, there's the outdoor patio, the main outdoor patio. And this area here is the general location of the ancillary outdoor patio, which they're requesting to use until 8:00 PM daily. There has been some concern about potential noise impacts to the development that's under construction on the adjacent property. But back when that was approved, I believe it was in '06, there were some mitigation or design adjustments made to that project in order to address some of the potential land use conflicts between the existing Woody's Wharf Restaurant and the new mixed-use project. So what this slide shows, it shows the northerly elevation of the Newport Bay Marina Project. The top exhibit shows, on the left-hand side, is the building that is adjacent to the Woody's Wharf Building. That wall is approximately 35 feet high. It is a mixed-use building, however. The first 13 or so feet in depth of that building, of the three-story building, would be for office uses, and there would be residential units on the other side. You can see also on that exhibit, there is a sound wall, and you can look below as well. It's a combination sound wall that runs from that building toward the bay and also back toward Newport Boulevard. The wall is approximately 12 feet high. It's a combination block wall and Plexigas sound wall, and that's what it was designed for, is to attenuate sound coming from Woody's Wharf towards the residential units on that property. So we'll move along. Here's a photograph, fairly recent, a week or so ago, of the wall being constructed. So that's the 35-foot-high wall. That's basically on the property line. And as you can see, the Woody's Wharf Building, as it exists below. Here is the photograph of the wall from the other side, from the Newport Bay Marina side. And the next photograph I'm going to show you is going to be kind of in this area where I'm circling here with the cursor. That will show the location of the sound wall that extends toward the harbor. So here, right here is approximately the location of the ending of the 35-foot-high wall. And the 12-foot sound wall will actually extend out to the cantilever portion of the Newport Marina Project. Like I said, that wall will be about 12 feet high. So if these gentlemen here are approximately 6 feet high, you can imagine the height of that wall that will be located between this mixed-use project and Woody's Wharf. So this slide is just a summary of the request, showing the existing hours of the interior dining room. Again, they're requesting a 9:30 AM opening, as opposed to the current 10. They're requesting a 2:00 AM Thursday night closing for the main outdoor dining area, again, with the additional 12 nights per year. And the ancillary patio use from 9:30 AM to 8:00 PM daily. And then again, down below, the dancing adding Thursday nights to the existing Friday and Saturday nights, and again, with the 12 additional nights per year. And again, live entertainment is currently allowed. And as with all amended use permits that keep these late hours, which is after 11:00 PM, an operator license issued by the chief of police would be required to be obtained by the applicant should this amended amendment to the use permit be approved. So staff is recommending conducting a public hearing and approving the request as identified in the draft resolution for approval.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. It is Woody's Wharf, their representative here, and they wish to address the council.
Good evening. On behalf of Woody's Wharf and the partners, all of whom are present, to answer any questions, the council members.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Roger Diamond. I'm the attorney who handled the matter initially before the City Council and also in the court proceedings in the Superior Court and the Court of Appeal. We want to thank the staff for an excellent job that it's done. A lot of work has been put into this application and this project. We want to thank the staff, we want to thank the city for all of its efforts, and we urge the council to approve the conditions, permit application, as it has been filed. There may be one slight modification to that that staff may explain to you, but I want to thank you very much. And if you need any additional information, we have representatives here to address any concerns you might have. We'd also like to have a little time in rebuttal in case there's any opposition. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up for a general public comment. Anyone wishing to address this on this item, please come forward. State your name.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I think it's helpful that you released a copy of the settlement agreement in the lobby, so that the public can see how your hands are apparently tied. If you want a litigation to go away, you have to approve this, apparently exactly in the form it is tonight. I found it interesting, looking at this, that the Woody's people seem to have, on their part, agreed to the settlement way back in August, more than two months ago. I am a little curious why it took so long on the city's side. Main comment I wanted to make is to repeat the comment I made at your last meeting, when you were continuing the item. It seems ironic to me that, to the limited extent I understand the litigation, that this is a settlement for. The primary basis for that, which Mr. Diamond argued apparently very eloquently and successfully, was that in hearing this matter previously, the City Council was violating its own ordinances. And I strongly feel that in hearing the matter tonight, the City Council is once again violating its own ordinances. And if you look at the memo that I sent to you at your meeting three weeks ago, which is on page 16-87 of your packet, it's very clear in the current city ordinance that we have that conditional use permits are issued by the Planning Commission. When there is a modification to the planning to a conditional use permit, section 205470 says, "The proposed change that does not comply with the previous subsection was about things that could be approved by the Planning Director. Things are either approved by the Planning Director, or the modification may only," and the word "only," I would assume, has some meaning, "only be approved by the original review authority for the project through a new permit application and processed in compliance with this chapter." The court, due to Mr. Diamond's action, nullified the action of the council, as I understand it. So the original review authority that issued this conditional use permit was the Planning Commission. And procedurally, it seems to me, if you're going to follow the ordinances that you've enacted and expect the public to follow, this request to amend it should be going back to the Planning Commission. They may or may not agree with it. If they don't agree with it, you can bring it up here for review and get it to be what you want it to be. But just as you originally did not follow the ordinances, you did not seem to be following the ordinances tonight. And I find that deeply ironic. Thank you.
Mr. Harp, just so we get it on the record for the proceedings, do you want to explain the rationale and legal basis for why we're doing it the way we're doing it?
Yes, Mayor Selich, thank you very much. You know, the municipal code provides us the last body that heard the matter. It gets to basically reconsider it if there's going to be any changes or modifications to that. City Council was the last body that considered the use permit, and we believe it's appropriate that it comes back to you for these proposed changes. Kim Branson charged with interpreting the municipal code, and I'd probably defer to her as far as her interpretation, and get her thoughts on it as well.
Mr. Mayor, we consistently provide the last reviewing body any amendment to a use permit. And so we saw this as consistent with our previous practice of that the City Council was the last reviewing body to take action on Woody's. And therefore, the amendment is appropriately returned to this body, excuse me, body for review and action.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, any other comments, please come forward.
Mayor Selich and council members, my name is Dennis Halloran. This is the third time in the last 10 years that I, as a resident who first came to the peninsula in 1943, have addressed this city. The subject's the same. It's a request to operate a nightclub in a residential area. In adopting the McFadden Square Canary Village general plan, it was determined that in a conflict, residents came first before businesses and tourists. Are we changing the pecking order because of a changing council? Makes you wonder. There are nine dance permits in this city, when I last checked, and only one is issued to a mixed-use residential area. And that had been grandfathered since before the current general plan. I wonder if this is because of police department wariness or residents' concern, or both? Makes you wonder. Speaking of our police department, why is there no police department statement in the staff report? Makes you wonder. Police Department came out against extending hours in the outside patio in communication as far back with Ralph Furra in the '80s. In staff reports, again in 2012, and again in 2013, buried in 174 pages of documents that you had. Since the early 1980s, the Planning Commission's many rulings have been supportive of the local residents' request for 11:00 PM closing of outdoor areas at 2813 Newport Boulevard. With a continued residential development encouraged by the city in the '90s and continuing to this current time, why is this historical denial of late-night outdoor patio use suddenly left for dead? Makes you wonder. Now, the city attorney's office assured me it is not illegal to accept campaign contributions from entities with unresolved municipal code violations. With this newly configured council and its fervor for transparency, as evidenced in requests for audits and other things, it might make sense for each member to make a brief disclosure of any campaign contributions in this matter, so that the public does not wonder. It looks like this nightclub operation matter is being dumped in the police department's lap, and their best response to us was, "Our hands are tied." All we can do, if your peace is disturbed, is call the Newport Beach Police Department at 644-3711. For those of you at home with your peace is disturbed, grab your pencils, call this number, 644-3711. Thank you, once again, for listening to the residents.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Kent Stoddard. I live at the 28th Street Marina. This issue is really very simple. In spite of the fact that the area already has the highest levels of alcohol-related crime and the highest levels of police calls for service of any area in the city, Woody's wants to expand its nightclub operation and serve more alcohol to more people. This is ludicrous, it's irresponsible, and it shows Woody's complete indifference to the area's problems. This use permit amendment will allow Woody's to use its 709-square-foot patio until 2:00 AM on 64 additional nights per year, so it can pack in more people and serve more alcohol. It's just that simple. This will result in more public drunkenness, public urination, drunk driving, fights, thefts, littering, and noise. You can be part of the solution by standing up against this reckless and unreasonable amendment and take a step toward improving this area, or the city can once again give in to Woody's, allowing its nightclub operation to run virtually uncontrolled and allowing the area to degrade even further. If you vote to approve this amendment, you will bear part of the blame for the negative consequences that will result from it. Please do the responsible thing and vote no. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. How many more people want to speak on this item? Okay.
My name is Norm Einhorn. I live at the 28th Street Marina. Most of the time, I have noise from Woody's is acceptable. But there are times when, all of a sudden, you get a blast of music at 11:30, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning. The boats that are in front of Woody's that people are making a hell of a lot of noise at that period of time. One at 2 o'clock in the morning, my wife and I hear people walking below our windows, using foul language, and urinating in the bay. When we came here to Newport Beach, we were told that this was going to be a restaurant that served liquor. We didn't know it was going to turn into a nightclub. And that's not fair when you're within walking distance of a nightclub. And it's not fair for the new building that's going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars that's going to be right next door. When that music comes out now, and especially with a wall being built, it's going to bounce right back to us at 28th Street Marina. If you want to be fair, then think of the residents once in a while instead of Woody's. I think that this whole thing is ridiculous. They came out and, at this meeting, said that they were operating illegally. And what they wanted to do was operate legally, and that was their first proposal. Why reward anyone that operates illegally? Why reward anyone that operates illegally? I think this is horrible, having a nightclub in this area, additional drunks, and I hope that there's some gumption here in the council that will counterbalance and make sense that this thing should never occur. There are people that go to work on Fridays. On Thursday, they're going to be trying to sleep. Is that fair? It's not fair now on Friday and Saturday. To give them Thursday is well is totally unacceptable. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor and council, my name is Jerry Conrad. I'm a partner at the Newport Bay Marina, and I just want to get on record, to set the record straight, on a previous sound report that was given as it relates to the noise levels at Woody's. We did a little bit of research and found that, three years ago, when this report was submitted on December twenty-first of two thousand and twelve, it reported very low sound levels. So we dug into it a little bit, and what do you know? On December twenty-first, the ambient temperature was forty-one, excuse me, forty-four point one degrees, so there wasn't anybody outside making noise. And we'd like you to take that into consideration, along with the fact that there was no studies done on our property, which was adjacent to it, because at the time it was abandoned. Simply want to get it into record.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Steve Mills, owner's rep with the Newport Bay Marina Project. I brought some pictures in, just to orient you. But we're excited to be revitalizing the area and making this investment in the Marina Project. And, you know, we went in it with our eyes open. We knew what the neighborhood was. We knew Woody's existed. All your, as was pointed out earlier, your packet includes, and you can scroll through, but this is a, just wanted to bring up the level of finish that we're doing. But your packet includes the site plan orienting you to the location of the commercial and residential units, closest of which is thirteen feet off the property line. We're complying with all the conditions that were imposed on the project, including the sound wall that was pointed out earlier. We merely expect good governance for code compliance, including noise. But we're not opposed to Woody's, but we do have genuine concern that their ability to comply with noise ordinance after ten o'clock at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, city council. My name is Robert Schmidt. I'm an acoustical consultant, the principal with RS Acoustics. We recently did a noise study at Woody's Wharf in last September. I've been a consultant for some time, worked a lot with the city of Newport Beach. I started consulting in nineteen eighty-one with a couple of other large companies here in California, and then I started RS Acoustics in two thousand and four. You know, some of the other projects that we've done here that you may be familiar with, a lot of work at Ho Hospital, with the work with the planner Jim Campbell. We've worked, we've done their annual test reports for the past ten years that are required in the development agreement. American Legion Post with Brenda Wisneski, good grief, Three Thirty-three Waterfront with the planners, McCona Nova. We were asked to run noise measurements at the Newport Bay Marina Project to determine the noise levels generated by Woody's Wharf, and perhaps anything else that was there, but primarily Woody's Wharf noise was a primary concern. And we did that, and we measured noise levels in September, the seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, which is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in September. We measured noise levels at a couple of different locations. The worst-case scenario, of course, is back in the corner lot on Waterside, immediately adjacent to the Woody's Wharf building. And also, it was mentioned earlier, there was a sound report done by Mestre Grieve back in two thousand and twelve, thirteen. We did the peer review of that for the city. That was our firm that did that. So when we were measuring noise at Woody's Wharf Newport Bay Project, the first night, which was a Thursday night, we measured directly at the property line, right at the corner of the two sites, right at Waterside there, right on top of a concrete block wall, which at the time was about eighteen to twenty feet tall. It's now up to thirty-four, thirty-five feet. And the ordinance at that point for commercial occupancies at nighttime is sixty dB. It can be seventy, it can be seventy if it's before ten o'clock. It cannot exceed sixty after ten o'clock at night. And when we were measuring at the property line, the commercial noise levels prior to ten o'clock were about sixty-six, and this is all in the report, our twenty-one September report that we submitted. After ten o'clock, they sort of shot up quite rapidly, and it sort of accelerated, if you will, to about seventy-three dB A at the property line, which is thirteen decibels over the ambient, or over the ordinance, rather. It stayed there until about one fifteen, one thirty at night, then they dropped back down again.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes. The following, the following two measurements, two nights, Friday and Saturday, were measured at the closest residential position in that same general area. And it was a same general scenario. Prior to ten o'clock, the ordinance wasn't a problem. The noise levels of music and crowd noise, shouting, that kind of stuff from the dock was, you know, satisfied the sixty, the ordinance for residences. But once it got past ten o'clock at night, noise levels from Woody's increased to the high sixties, you know, exceeding by far the fifty dB A L A Q noise level that's allowed at residential properties. I noticed a little bit earlier...
Sir, you're going to have to wrap it up. I mean, you kind of ramble on.
Okay. I noticed a little bit earlier, there was talk about a sound wall that'll be twelve feet tall. I, just based on quick review, I don't think that's going to work, because I think the residences at the second and third level are going to look right over the top of it at noise from Woody's Wharf. I'm sorry for taking so long. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary McKidric, partner to Alan Mackens, local firm here at Resonar Corran Omar for a long time. I've addressed this council before in two thousand and thirteen and back again regarding this project. So I originally asked to be the only speaker, but we were only being given three minutes apiece, so we split it up. Steve oriented you to the project, so I'd like, if you guys, please put up the last picture on the project. It's important to note what, A, the improvements being done in the investment in Newport Beach. My client's extremely excited about Newport Beach and bettering this community. The issue before us really is simply about noise and occupancy, and how can adjacent properties really coexist? A couple of things. We're not against Woody's, as Steve said. The issue here is just making sure we anticipate a problem. For all of us, let's just use logic. We see a train wreck coming, and we're asking the city for good governance to anticipate and work with us to address the noise. Although, Robert Schmidt, that report is in your packet, please look at it. Here's the key point. Key point is that the noise accelerates at ten o'clock to one o'clock in the morning, not decelerates. That's what the code requires. That's the key takeaway. So the issue is, what do you do about it? So what we can do about it is ask the council, and unfortunately, you've got some constraints with the CUP, because you just settled a settlement. I did look at the settlement for the first time a few minutes ago. I would request both city and Woody's, and I did talk to Roger Diamond earlier tonight, to address noise in advance, because we know the problem will exist. It will save all of us time and effort in the future if we can do this. So tonight, three things. Balance the interests and anticipate and mitigate problems. Our three nights of noise studies show a problem. We have an expert in the field. His report is real. Please do not discount it. The study that was done three years ago was done on December twenty-first, in the middle of winter, on a cold night. It's a one data point. Ours are three nights that are recent. We request, here's the request, this is going to be tough for you, because you just settled a lawsuit. We're asking you to look at the CUP, and I would ask that you request Woody's to be a good neighbor and say, "If we are not in compliance, we will mitigate those noise levels." Now, I know the city has said, I've spent a lot of time with them, "We will make them mitigate to noise levels." It's not practical, folks, to fix operations. There are going to be some issues here, and I've asked, Mr. Piotto was on the planning commission when it went through, there are technologies that exist today that would allow everyone to mitigate this in the future. I've met with several of you, and I've mentioned it. This is about good governance. This isn't about a restaurant. This isn't, this is about simply good governance. The general plan, which this city passed, has elements of adjacency. There will always be conflicts. How you, and I will wrap it up. I wish we had a couple more minutes as the most impacted neighbor. I'd request that for, if I could, Mayor Selich?
Give you another thirty seconds. You can do it then.
Thanks for the accommodation. This is serious. I'd request that you, that you look at the noise reports. I would ask that you anticipate and please address in advance, in a reasonable manner, the adjacent businesses which the general plan anticipates. We are a good neighbor. We are a great developer. You will be proud of our project. Please look, one last thing. That wall that's sitting there, the issue is the noise is coming from one direction to another. We're asking for mitigation, and we would ask that the CUP be modified to include conditions in which you could do now, where the mitigations will be included within the Without more time, I'm limited in what I can say. I have several other things to say. There are several report issues in the CUP that are incorrect. I would like the opportunity to address that with the city attorney at a different point, but with the time, I'll be respectful of your limitation on me. Thank you.
You did a good job making your points, Gary. Okay. Any other speakers on this? Okay. I'll invite Mr. Diamond back up for rebuttal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We do not agree with the opposition. We do note, however, that the attorney McKidric does not oppose Woody's, does not oppose the application for the CUP, neither do the other representatives of the Marina. We urge the council to go forward and approve the CUP as requested. My client is not immune to the noise laws of the city of Newport Beach and will obviously honor all municipal code provisions regarding noise. The city did its own study a few years ago and established that noise was not the issue, which is why some people shifted from the noise issue to the alleged nuisance. The fact of the matter is, it doesn't create a noise problem, but the city already has noise ordinances in effect that will be applicable to Woody's, so we're not asking for any exemption. Thank you very much. We urge the council to approve the CUP application. If you have any questions of me or the representatives of Woody's, we're here to answer any questions. And we are good neighbors. We've tried to meet with the Marina to the south, and we couldn't get through. We'd be glad to discuss issues with them in the future, but the project must go forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I'll close the hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments heard tonight. I represent District One, which includes Woody's, Babwa Peninsula. When I ran for city council a year ago, I ran on a platform to listen to the residents. I also ran with others who voiced that same commitment to listen to the residents and to respect the residents and the quality of life issues that we have in Newport Beach and to enhance, to protect and enhance quality of life in Newport Beach. District One is known as the cultural heart of the city in many ways, in terms of the marine-serving commercial activity. It has been residential for decades, so the coexistence, the intersection of residential and commercial activity has been in existence for a number of years. Most recently, in the last general plan, the two thousand and six general plan, as one of our speakers noted this evening, that the residential and commercial interests have to coexist, yet if there is a draw, the residential needs will prevail. I have enjoyed, in the last nine or ten months, working with existing restaurant owners and residents in the community to, I call them the Peninsula Peace Talks, if you will, to bring the so-called opposing forces together. And I'm really pleased that, most recently, on September twentieth, we had a community policing meeting where the residents spoke to how they feel with additional police support, which is an important deterrent to some of the nuisance issues on the peninsula, that life is improving. However, the issues with Woody's is a major concern. The ongoing issues in past, present, and possibly future remain an ongoing concern. And certainly in the last few weeks, I've received literally dozens of letters from Woody's, or from residents opposed to this conditional use permit additions for Woody's. We have heard from many people in support of Woody's, but most of those people are not local residents. So I'm really listening to the residents. I will be voting no. I feel that, as one other speaker mentioned, I mean, who needs to dance until two A.M. on a Thursday night? It's beyond me. It's a school night. We are family, community. I am pro-business. I'm pro-resident, pro-business. I am very proud of the intersection of working together. We have many fine operators on the peninsula who are training their employees. They know how not to over-serve their patrons. They know how to not serve people who are inebriated and spill out into the community. We have examples of that, and I've publicly talked about that and showcased them, and am proud of those good operators. I would love to see Woody's be a good operator in our community, respect our noise laws. It's really critical, and I do not feel it should be a burden placed on the residents to report to the city that there are code violations of the noise code. I would like to see Woody's, perhaps at this juncture this evening, voluntarily participate in a city-sponsored noise study that would be done quarterly for at least the first year, possibly two years, just to be sure that we're all on track and that the burden is not placed on the residents to call the code enforcement, to call the police at one thirty A.M. to say that noise levels are excessive. I would like to see if that could happen. Again, I come down on the side of the residents, quality of life, eliminating to the extent we can, mitigating nuisance issues on the peninsula. I'm sorry we have to even go through this discussion. There are many fine operators on the peninsula that you don't hear residents complain about, but Woody's seems to be the issue, and the proximity to this beautiful new development, Newport Marina, and the folks at Twenty-Eighth Street have been living with this situation now for several years. So that's my comment, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. The story of Woody's Wharf in Newport Beach is a lot like Jonah and the whale. The city essentially swallowed up Woody's Wharf, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to chime in a little bit, because I think if the audience and those in the city understood the backdrop and the legal complications that the city was entangled with, with the prior council, they'd understand why the CUP is being agreed to. Mr. Torres, are you the city attorney on this case?
Councilmember, yes, I'm helping on this case.
Could you give a little bit of the procedural background regarding the different steps, planning commission, city, superior court, then appellate court?
Sure. Briefly, this item went to the planning commission a couple of years ago, was called for review by council member Hen, was then taken up. The council reversed many of the decisions of the planning commission. That item was in, writ was filed by the owners of Woody's Wharf, went to the trial court. At that level, the city actually prevailed. It was then appealed to the appellate court, and at the appellate court level... And at the Appellate Court level, the city, the Superior Court was overturned. We had then filed a petition with the California Supreme Court. Then we then withdrew that petition and we entered into settlement negotiations with Woody's Wharf. And here we are today.
At that time, at the time of the appeal to Supreme Court, what were court costs to the city? Do you know?
Roughly, I would say a little bit over $100,000 at that point.
Did, are you familiar with the grounds at which the Appellate Court overturned the Superior Court?
Yes, it was, I believe, and this is going to be paraphrasing the court, the city in the Appellate Court's mind didn't follow procedural steps to call the item up for review correctly from the Planning Commission level. And there was potential bias on the part of a former council member who had actually called that item up for review.
I think, I think that's the most important thing. That's why the story of Woody's is almost a tragedy. These businessmen almost lost their business and their livelihood. And it's, it's not because of any fault of the developer who has a beautiful project to the south, or the nice residents who are the other side. It's because the, the city council had shown such bias, such egregious bias against them, that the Appellate Court actually cited it in their decision, which is actually kind of embarrassing the city of Newport Beach. And it was discussed in chambers extensively regarding this particular councilman's bias against Woody's. And I think anyone has a fundamental idea of fairness, should be bothered with one group being singled out, whether they're 50 years old, like Woody's, or whether they're five years old, being singled out in such a prejudicial manner and basically almost being forced to close its doors. Well, when we have to appeal the Supreme Court of California, who is not the most concerned with a bar, that's not the most pressing issue in the state right now, we sort of, our hands are a little bit tied. And the representative who did a fine job for Woody's has a lot of leverage and can ask for things. That makes it very hard for the current council to say no to, because we've already been essentially reprimanded at the Appellate Court level. Now, Mayor Selich did a fantastic job, along with Councilwoman Dixon looking out for the constituents of her district, to try to rein in Woody's Wharf from some of the demands that at first, in my opinion, were not fair either. And here we are before you, something that's not the best, given where the original council took off from, but something that we think is fair and considers all parties, considering what the high court has said. Thank you.
Councilmember Curry.
It's an interesting take on the issue. I'll perhaps provide a little counterpoint to that. First of all, let's talk about the prior council. Michael Hen was a man I was proud to serve with for eight years in the city council. And he got up every day and asked himself, what could he do to make the peninsula a better place to live and work? And when we opened Marina Park, when you look at the 40% reduction in group home concentration on the peninsula, when you look at what's happening in Alito Village, when you look at the fact that this hotel has been approved, you know that Mike was successful in what he tried to do. And Mike put the neighbors first in his focus for what he was doing. Now, we're here tonight because on March 17th, by one vote, the city council reversed itself on appealing this decision to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court, the high court actually hasn't ruled on this. That was against the recommendation of the city attorney. And because of that one vote, we lost all of our leverage. And Diane and Ed did a tremendous job in trying to negotiate with absolutely no leverage. When I look at what the financial request was before we got to this settlement, they did a good job there. But it's still an agreement that concedes much, much more to the applicant than even the Planning Commission was going to give him as part of the original application. So why was that? And I think we have to go back and look at what drove these decisions. Now, Mr. Halloran raised the issue of contributions. And I've always said that the strategy is, that the way to find out what's really going on is to follow the money. Woody's and people associated with Woody's gave more than $4,900 to Mr. Piotta. They actually gave more than that and they were, they were cited by the city clerk and forced to return, he was forced to return a contribution, although he went through, if you look at the press carefully, an interesting charade where he gave the money back immediately and then went through a one-month press thing where he said he wasn't going to give the money back. And then a month later said, well, I'm going to give it back now. But he'd already done so. Of course, we didn't know that at the time because he failed to report returning the money. He subsequently held a fundraiser with these. Now, these are people who have already maxed out on their contributions, but he has an event at their facility to raise money for his campaign. And then after he gets caught by a citizen, he reports, oh, it cost $500. Now, I'll let you in the retail and restaurant business figure out what with tax, tip, valet parking, et cetera, the bill has to be to get to exactly $500. Let's hope nobody took that extra chip. But that's what happened. And we've had a series of issues here of taking excess contributions, failing to report them properly, and then decisions that specifically benefit this applicant. So for $4,900, they're getting $355,000 of cash as part of this settlement. Let me put that number in perspective. We hear a lot from Mr. Piotta about the cost of the bunnies, about 300, about $225,000, how that's government waste. He even made frankly a disturbing video of himself vandalizing the bunnies. Well, here, this is 50% more money just given back to one of his contributors. The money that was given to him is 10% of the total amount of money that he raised in the campaign. That's simply something that should not be able to happen in our community. We need better campaign laws or something so that we don't have votes to be able to be purchased like that. And that's why we have this decision here. Now, there are a lot of people who disagree, or we could have probably worked out in agreement with the neighbors and with Woody's about a fair way to operate. I've gone to Woody's myself. But we were denied that opportunity because we abandoned the appeal and we basically left all the leverage that the city had on behalf of the residents because of these considerations. And I think that's a real shame. And I think the residents here are very prescient in predicting what's going to happen in the future.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see any requests to speak. This is Councilmember Piotta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Mr. Muldoon said, this is a difficult situation that we've got ourselves into because of the way a previous council handled this situation. And the mayor and Mayor Protem Dixon did a great job of negotiating to a reasonable amount. And certainly, I'd rather not have the bunnies and I would rather not have to pay a $355,000 settlement on this. And that doesn't include the roughly $250,000 of our time and outside attorney's time that we had to pay on our side. This was a $600,000, you know, screw-up by the previous council. You know, contrary to what Mr. Curry thinks as far as campaign contributions, you know, I was on the, on the city, the Planning Commission in '06 to '10. And I dealt with the Marina Park project. And Woody's came and complained at that project saying, hey, look, you're going to be putting residents zero feet from our property line and, you know, we're a restaurant. We serve liquor. We're, you know, we're open late. What's going to happen? You're going to bring a bunch of people complaining to what's going on. And there is a Planning Commissioner, I stood up for that property owner at that time, which wasn't Mr. McKittrick's client. It was the previous owner who went BK before Mr. McKittrick's client bought it. But we moved the residential away from the property line. We required the sound wall and we required notification for all those people that are going to be purchasing or renting in there, that they have to know that Woody's is there. So we tried to, you know, describe a line there that was fair and reasonable between two property owners. And so, you know, I've been involved with this project for over eight or 10 years and followed this thing closely and from both sides of that property line. And Mr. McKittrick and I have talked and, you know, they, they're concerned, but the, the city does have a noise ordinance that Woody's will have to comply with. And if they need to turn their volume down, or if they need to build sound walls to accommodate it, they will be required to do it like any other restaurants here in the, in the community. I've gotten a lot of emails saying that Woody's is a bad actor and that they don't comply with the laws as they are. Why are you giving them more? And you know what? That's not the case. It's not my experience with, with these owners. It's not my experience with the other restaurants in the area. They are, even the police department has said that they are no greater or no worse of a nuisance call compared to the other operators in the area. And those calls that are attributable to Woody's are, you know, if you arrest somebody on the street on Balboa Boulevard, where did they come from? Well, they could have come from a dozen different places. If they do it in front of Woody's, they get tagged as being from Woody's, even though they may or may not have been from Woody's. So, you know, we've got a difficult situation as, as Mayor Protem Dixon has done a marvelous job as far as her Peninsula Peace Talks that she's talked about, because we've got mixed use down there. And we've got operations like Woody's that have been there for 50-plus years. And they've got certain rights and we're trying to, to comply with both their rights and the adjacent neighbors' rights. This settlement agreement and this CP do a really good job of that. And I'm confident that Woody's is diligent in, in trying to comply with the, with the noise ordinances. And they are going to be as good or better of an operator than any other operator down there. So I'm, I'm happy to help them, if you call it that. Mr. Curry would say that I've been bought and paid for. You know, they came to me on the campaign because of my previous support for property rights and they knew of my support for property rights. And so we are of like mind when it comes to property rights. And that's why we have America the way it is and freedom of speech. You can actually support people that you like and agree with. And it's not that if you give them money, they will vote your way. I resent and, and I don't get insulted by Mr. Curry because that's just what he does. But I'm happy to support this project. I think it's a great project. I would love it if the Marina Park South property owner and Woody's would get together so that before their property owners, before their apartments are occupied next May or so, that, you know, there aren't going to be any rough edges and, and things can be worked out based on operations and doors being opened and, and too much noise coming from the boaters parked out at the docks or, or their patrons in the parking lots, which are typical of operators in that area, restaurants or bars. And I feel confident that both parties will be able to work those agreements out. But that's why we are a government and that's why we have governance laws and that's why we have a noise ordinance, so that if there is a problem, we have the ability to step in and force compliance like we would with any operator. So, you know, I'm sorry that there are sore feelings between neighbors. I think that they have gotten much, much more beyond what is the actual problems that exist between the two. But I feel confident that the conditions of approval in this project are such that they will be forced to be good neighbors if they don't voluntarily, but I think that there's motivation on everybody that I've talked to's part to try and be that good neighbor and comply. So I'm happy to support this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Duffy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very confident that Woody's can comply with the norse, noise ordinance. I have empirical evidence to that and, and I thoroughly believe that Woody's wants to create a good environment, especially in the new development. Those are all their customers. So it's very logical that they would want to appease them and I know they will.
Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify, follow up to Councilman Curry's statement. We had appeal to the Supreme Court of California under the advisement of council. Some lawyer, I may lose some friends on this statement, but the outside counsel had a very vested interest in appealing this to Supreme Court because it was relatively embarrassing decision, which really was not their, their fault. Bad facts make for bad law. What happened essentially after that is we had requested that the city attorney file, through outside counsel, file a motion to reconsider. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, and unfortunately, that date had been missed. So the alternative is to file to the Supreme Court of State of California. And I didn't take a dime from Woody's. I'll gladly take money from your campaign in the future, from my campaign in the future if you think that we set up for property rights, which we did. But I didn't do this because of money. I didn't take any money from Woody's. I did it because it's the right thing. And whether you have a residential dock or a business, or someone's trying to take your home with eminent domain to put up a Walmart, I personally will fight for your property rights, for your right to have a business and for your right to have your freedoms. So I guess I sort of take offense to this notion that somehow I or any of my colleagues were bought and paid for on this. This is something that is near and dear to our heart and this is something that I, I can say that we did the right thing.
Okay. Councilmember Piotta, would you like to make a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation for approval.
Do we have a second?
A second then.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote.
With councilmembers Curry, Mayor Protem Dixon, and Councilmember Petroz voting no, the motion carries for three.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to current business. Item number 17, the proposed budget preparation framework.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we do have a staff report on this, but just in the interest of time, attachment A talks about something that the Finance Committee worked on to try and address some of the concerns last time in the first year of the Finance Committee's operations, to bring more transparency to the budget process. So it suggests three or four deep dives into departments. The first one's happening on Thursday, as well as a public workshop where anybody can come in and ask any question of us about the budget. And then just kind of some principles that we've followed in the past that the Finance Committee likes. So we present that to you. It's a, it's a review and provide input to us. Otherwise, that's the process that we'll follow with the Finance Committee on budget issues for this year.
Is there any questions of staff or any suggestions? Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, this is receive and file, so no motions necessary, correct? Okay, move on to item number 18, the underground utility assessment district deferral program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. An assessment district is a financing mechanism in itself in, in which, you know, is initiated by proponents of the district. And it's, it's done to, to form, well, to form an assessment to pay for the construction of some public infrastructure, and in this case, namely, undergrounding utilities. So upon successful formation of a district, property owners may pay all or a portion of the assessment, or allow assessments to go up to bond. So there is a financing mechanism already in place. Individuals who pay off the assessment prior to the issuance of a bond will not incur any costs associated with bond financing if bonds are issued. However, staff has received numerous inquiries from both assessment proponents and opponents regarding the city's willingness to, even after the financing, to, to sponsor and administer an undergrounding utility district deferral program. And this is whereby the city would essentially take a promissory note and hold that out for 20 or more years and would collect only upon transfer of, of, of the property. So the purpose of the staff report is to determine the city's, city council's willingness to, to approve a new assessment deferral program and identify the eligibility requirements, the process in proximate terms. So we've identified a number of financial risk and some policy issues, but we'll defer to council. We recommend that, that council provide staff direction as to whether council supports a deferred assessment loan program or not.
Okay. Mayor Protem Dixon, did you want to comment on this?
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. And I also appreciate you working with your staff to come up with another alternative to financing. So let me just step back and kind of just summarize what you just said. There are currently two ways for a resident to finance or pay for their portion of the assessment, and that is to pay it all at once in cash upfront, or to pay through their property tax installment over, I think, I believe, a 20-year period. And that's essentially a tax-free loan. They have to pay interest on that, but it's really a tax-free financing mechanism. I know if it's a loan, it's a tax-free method of paying over a 20-year period that assessment obligation. Is that correct? Yeah.
Your microphone's not on, I don't think. Your microphone's not on, I don't think.
Sorry. Sorry. It's a, it's tax-free to the purchaser of the bond.
Yeah, so this third option we're considering now is a total deferral for certain qualifications to be determined. And you've identified in your report some of what other communities have done. As I've looked at your assessment of the risks, I am supportive in concept of a deferral program, but I would like the following risk mitigation factors to be considered if we were to do it, because I do want to mitigate those risks to the cities. I want to keep it simple. I want to have, in conformance with other laws around programs available to people qualified for senior benefits, depending on age and income, would like that to be a factor. In terms of transferability of the property, I want to, would want to ensure that the property that has the deferral lien on it, that it's transferred to anyone, whether it's a family member through a trust or to another party, but that transfer would qualify as a disposition of the property. So, I don't want there to be confusion. I would not want there to be any confusion of, well, it's in the same trust, or it's in the same legal entities, so therefore, it's not technically a transfer. I want to keep it very simple, very clear, again, to mitigate any confusion or complexity so that the city would be paid back for that amount after that period of time. My understanding is the city did, a council, Newport Beach City Council, did approve this, a similar deferral program, I believe, in 1989. How many people participated in that program?
None that I'm aware of.
So, I have no way of predicting how many people would participate if we, if council were to approve this methodology, but I think the numbers would be low. So, again, that would be one opportunity to look at risk mitigation, low-level risk. So, I'm interested in what the comments of my fellow council members have on this. I am proponent of doing assessment districts, having residents pay for it if we can make it possible to, for people who qualify it because of age or income and these other factors as I described, I would like to see if we could work it out. So, I'm interested in others' comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Petros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan and colleagues, I wholeheartedly support this notion. I think in my learning experience with AD 118 and the fears that came out of that, this would be one mechanism to allay those fears and gain some type of support. I think that, in my mind, the things that I would be looking for in terms of the requirements, I'm not certain that age is an important factor. In fact, I think it could be considered inverse discrimination if we did set an age. I do think that income is the primary consideration, and we should set the income level to be a low income. I do believe it should be the primary place of residence. I agree with Mayor Protem Dixon, the notion of transfer should be very, very clear and only consider the transfer of the property from the person that started this deferral process. So, no within families, outside of trust, all of that. That would constitute a transfer, in my mind. The one thing that I did, two items that I was somewhat concerned about, is there any circumstance, and I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to this question myself, where the city conducting an appraisal on a property would in any way trigger a revaluation or reassessment of that property and affect the tax liability of the homeowner? Are there any circumstances where that could arise?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is there, in the 89, oh, and then setting the interest, the interest should be set just as a CPI or some low index. It should not be to generate revenue or create a stream of payments to the city. It is simply just to keep pace with the value of a dollar. And then finally, the, finally, he's going to forget his, oh, that it's instructive in the 89 example, nobody opted for this, but is there some type of mechanism we can also include that the total exposure of the city to participation in this not exceed some level? And I don't know if you could describe a particular number or a percent of the total value of the assessment district.
So, you'd like to cap it in some way?
Some way, some way. And I, again, I don't think you're going to get to a number, because it's going to change over the size of different assessment districts, the complexion of those who are participating in it. So, if it's tied either back to the budget so that we don't erode general fund or our ability to make other moves, or it is tied to the value of the assessment district itself so that we can keep a lid on the overall exposure within that assessment district, I think those would be wise courses of action. Having gone through all that detail, though, I, again, would just reiterate, I wholeheartedly support this type of a mechanism for our residents.
Councilmember Curry.
Well, you know, this is one of those ideas that sounds good, but in practical application, it's got some very serious issues. First of all, there's nothing more dangerous than a tax that I vote for, but you pay. And if I'm one of those people, I'm always going to vote yes, and you're always going to pay, and I'm going to get the benefit for it. And I'm very cautious about those types of situations. Secondly, we talk about abatement until there is a change of ownership. It is not uncommon for one spouse to survive the other spouse for another 20 years. So, you could have abatement that would go on for 40-plus years before this would ever be paid. That puts the city in the business of being a bank, a bank making loans where it doesn't collect interest and where it waits for somebody to die before it gets paid back. And that's just not a business I think we should be in. The second issue is that what this does is it accumulates a huge tax liability for when that house, in fact, does sell. So, just like with, we've seen with places with tax liens or with Melrose, what that's going to do is it's going to drive down the value of that home to compensate for the fact that the purchaser's going to have to make a huge tax payment at the time he buys it. And I can't possibly believe that that's going to be good for real estate values. So, before we really get into this, we need to think very carefully about these practical considerations and how this works. I appreciate how we want to make it easier for people to vote for underground assessments. I think underground assessments are a good thing. But we can't make it so easy that people vote for them without the obligation to pay for them. And we have to be very careful that we, as a city, don't find ourselves like the mortgage crisis we just saw, of people making bad loans that are not collectible for decades until long after we're gone, and some other city councils trying to balance the budget with a lot of deferred taxes.
Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. I'm just looking over the report. I see it says that the amount we have to put aside to basically be a bank, in essence, to give this money at a reduced cost or at a low CPI increase is dependent upon the level of public participation in the proposed loan program, which makes sense. What was the amount that was put into place in the 1989 deferral program? Do you know?
I'm sorry, the income level?
Well, the income level says 24, right?
24, and in today's dollars, that would be about $45,000.
Okay. I don't know how successful the program was, but how much money had to be put aside to do this?
At the time, it was $40,000 that was set aside to assist property owners.
Okay, that's it? How many districts were done in that time period? Do you know?
This was for one particular district.
Okay, so it's done once, okay. And is there any way of knowing at all, based on the number of districts remaining and the number of households that we think would be eligible for some fixed amount, like 45, let's say, how large of a pot this would need to be? Are we talking a couple million, a couple hundred thousand?
Well, we haven't had a lot of, we've had a lot of interest. We haven't had many people come forward ultimately when it came time to apply for a program to actually do that. We've, as I said, in 1989, I wasn't able to find anybody that applied for the program. I looked, took a look at Manhattan Beach, and they, I think, have five active members. When the city had the CDVG program, we had no takers as well.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're not really sure. Well, I was talking about this with a fellow Finance Committee member, Will O'Neill, about some options, possibly applying some affordable housing funds towards that amount that essentially act as the loan amount to subsidize it. I know that that would help keep people who are on fixed income in the residence. Is that something that we could use as the pot that could be drawn from to offer this?
I think we would have to do some more research to make sure that that can be done, but I think that is a, that may be possible. I think what we're, what we're struggling with is the city, I think, is holding around 4.1 million of affordable housing and has proposals out that would exhaust all of that affordable housing money. And the city has since repealed future affordable housing collections, except for those that were inked, those development agreements that may have been inked prior to 2013.
Well, I think new development agreements are going to be coming forward. I guess I'm just wondering if it's even an option.
I think staff would have to do some additional research.
Okay. But we're really not talking about that much money, though, essentially. Based on prior experience and the number of people who've come in the prior programs, it seems like, although you don't offer a cap number, do you have one in mind?
Well, you know, given, given that this is something that may be out there for, as Mr. Curry said, 20, 40 years, I would want to seriously consider reduce, controlling that exposure, but I do not have a cap in mind.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Piotr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, is this kind of a loan not available in the private sector?
This loan is available in the private sector. So, during the cash collection period, really, you can secure any kind of financing that you want prior to, it doesn't have to be cash out of your bank account. So, you can secure private financing to do this on your own.
So, you know, let's get the example of the widower, widower that's on a fixed income and can't even afford the $4,000 to underground, because what we're talking about is undergrounding their portion on their site to connect to the off-site portion that's paid for by the district. So, we're talking, well, I guess it would be both, wouldn't it? So, rather than paying a $125 to $250 a year tax bill that's being deferred by this kind of a loan program? And can they get that kind of a loan?
Well, there are a number of different loan programs available to the public, but you could get a home equity loan would be one.
I mean, it's already being financed through the tax district. So, really, they're only paying...
So, during the cash collection period, they could opt out and secure private financing on their own.
But the only advantage of being able to do that is to not have to make a payment at all, because in effect, the tax district is financing that project. So, the off-site work, the part that's done by the district, it goes on your property tax bill, and you get 20, or whatever the length of the bond is, 20 years to 30 years to pay it. So, it's already being financed that way. So, the only advantage of going to a private financing or to do the cash buyout would be if they didn't have to pay even that $250 a year. They could defer that until they sell the house. The bigger portion is, is the onsite work, that they're going to be required to spend money, even though they didn't vote for the district, they're going to have to spend $2,000 to $8,000 to underground their electrical on their site to connect to the district's new underground system. That's the hard-earned check to write, because if you finance that normal off-site work through the, through the tax district, that's, like I said, it's $250 a year, depending on what their actual dollar amount is and what their benefit is. But that, writing that $4,000 check may be a check that they can't write. So, that's the kind of financing that I would think would be more important to have, you know, private financing or this kind of deferral financing that we would act as bank, which I would, like Mr. Curry said, I'd rather not have the city get into the banking business, not get into the determination whether somebody's worthy of that kind of a loan or not from a government standpoint. So, that's why I'm kind of drilling down to say, you know, if this is available in the public, excuse me, in the private sector, why are we providing it?
Mayor Protem Dixon.
My understanding, as we discussed this this evening, is to, if we all agree, if there is a majority, to direct staff to come back with a proposed concept of how this could work. So, it could be based on age, income, other methods of financing, but to explore this question further and the viability, the pros and cons of offering such a program under certain conditions and certain types of property. So, that's what we're, is that, I'm just clarifying, that's what this discussion that we're having right now is about. So, we're not voting on it or not even considering any specifics. We're just, if we agree, we will say, staff, come back with your analysis of this type of deferred program and the pros and cons of doing it. Is that right? Right now, we're just speculating on the risks, on the issues, of which Mr. Curry has made some important points to. But I see some benefits to do it. We talked many months ago when we were talking about one of the districts in Corona del Mar, aligning with a local bank to ensure that that private financing opportunity is smoothed, if you will, in a perfectly legal, legitimate type of way. So, I would be interested in seeing how we could, see if there's interest in the private market also to participate. And maybe we're breaking new ground here in terms of municipal assessment district finance, and maybe other cities who've had difficult financial situations have not gone down this road because they don't have the money to do this type of thing. Newport Beach is different. I don't want to take unnecessary risks. Necessary, we want to protect the taxpayers, but I also want to see if we could provide a benefit. So, I guess I'm saying I support, if we go forward, staff to come back with an analysis of the pros and cons and the efficacy of doing this. Thank you.
Councilmember Petros.
Mark, could I put you on the spot? I'm sorry to do this to you. When we were at Newport Heights Elementary School, we had those number of meetings with the residents on this matter. And in fact, the question of financing, both the local hookup and the availability of financing for the overall connection in the private market did come up. And reflecting on the fact that I'm the one who sees unicorns around here, it's my recollection that there were some in the financial markets that came up and said that either those loans are not available, or they are very costly or not advantageous for the, an individual resident to go get. That was the impression that was left with me at our meetings. And that's why I was saying that the interest that we, if we do this, that we charge isn't to create a revenue stream, which is what a private bank will do, but to just cover the cost of the dollar. Do you have that same recollection about the financing?
Councilmember Petros, we talked about that, you know, and there's two aspects of the money that we're talking about here. One is to connect your property to the system that's in the alley. And we've heard some numbers out there, too. You know, first off, you know, somewhere in that 20% range of properties don't have any cost because they've already been connected. But cost estimates that we've seen in previous districts, you know, that is somewhere in that $2,000 per property price range to connect up underground to your electric meter. So, you have that cost. And the question is, can you get private financing for $2,000? You know, I think there's options out there. Are you going to put a $2,000?
Are you going to put a $2,000 lien against your house? Probably not, but there's ways to get that money. I think what Dan and the finance team are proposing here is really about the property tax assessment. So for a typical district that costs $20,000, and you spread that over 20 years, and people want to defer that $20,000, so that $1,100, $1,200 annual payment, and they want to defer that, that's really what we're talking about here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Selich and councilmembers. My name is Dennis Baker. I live in 8117, which is the assessment district that's kind of triggering this. I realize you're looking for guidance for more going forward also in other districts. And I have the distinction of being, I think it's either number four, number five on the list, from the most expensive end of it. And I will not be asking for a deferred in either case, whether you decide to offer that or not. However, I want to relate a couple things, conversations. So I have a neighbor that's 86 years old. She's a widow. She and I had a dialogue, email dialogue, and I thought it was productive, because it gave me an insight into her concerns. And her concerns were, I think, really valid. And she's going like, "I can't afford that. I don't have that kind of money." And she's talking about the assessment. She'd been given some pretty high numbers. She'd been told it was going to be $30,000. As I said, I'm way above her, and I'm at $27,000. So I calmed her down a little bit on that. And then another statement she made was, "I don't want to encumber my children. I'm going to leave my property to my children," and this type of thing. But I did point out to her, now, she's been in there for a long, long time. And I did point out to her that when you do the numbers, for example, the house directly across the street from her, which is my next-door neighbor, is on the market right now for $3.4 million. I don't think he's going to get it. I hope he does, but I don't think he's going to get quite that high. But even if you run it back down, take my number. So I've got a $27,000 bill I'm looking at to do this. I have no doubt in my mind at all I could sell my property, put it on the market and sell it tomorrow for $2.7 million. Just using like round numbers, that's 1% that would come out of the sale price if I chose to defer it. So we're not, relative to the property values, we're not talking huge numbers. Now, I don't know if that was calming to her or not, but the idea is that we're talking about some very expensive properties here, and we're talking about some numbers that are fairly low. But it's the psychological aspect to people like my 86-year-old widow neighbor that they're not, those pieces aren't all coming together. All they know is they're looking at a pretty big number, and that's a little frightening to them. And I think that that's what we're really talking about here, is to give some confidence to some of the people who might agree with the other benefits of undergrounding but are seeing it as a very personal challenge for them financially. So that aspect, I think, is really, really important, and it is to us that are, of course, proponents of this. I've been given a number of about 40% as a very, very low estimate of number of people that will probably prepay this anyway. You get the bill, you pay the bill, and you move on. And then the other people are probably in a reasonable position to do the other. And I think your numbers, as has been indicated by some of the comments, might be really, really low. So the idea of this, once staff comes back, and maybe they can come back with some better numbers, would be to give you confidence that the participation rate might end up actually being fairly low, but it's still that psychological thing that I can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Will O'Neil. I sit on the Finance Committee. Unless there is urgency, I would recommend that this go through the Finance Committee, because there are many types of recommendations that can be made along the lines of using different kinds of funds. Perhaps there's a grant program instead of a loan program. I echo Councilmember Curry's concerns that the city acting as a bank is perhaps not in the best interests of its citizens, because at the end of the day, the threat of non-payment is foreclosure. I don't believe that the city is really in a place to be able to go out and foreclose on its residents, particularly the ones that would take advantage of a program like this, which is why there should be different kinds of funds available that could cover something like this. I recommend that this go through the Finance Committee to have a more robust discussion, talk with Dan. And again, I do recommend a program like this, but perhaps not in the form as it is currently recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council. I'm generally in support of pursuing this. I don't think that the participation rate is going to be that high. Just by what you cited, happened in 1989, your citation of what's going on in Manhattan Beach, and I'm sure if you check some other cities that have similar programs in similar coastal communities as ours, you'd probably find the same situation occurring. And so if you're not going to have a lot of participants, why have it at all? I think it becomes a good sales tool for getting people to vote for the assessment district, just as the person that Dennis pointed out had some concerns. So to me, it seems like it's worthwhile pursuing exactly what format it's in. I think, you know, staff needs to do some more work on it. Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
I'd like to make a motion. I think Mr. O'Neil's idea to refer it back to the Finance Committee is an excellent one. And so I would like to make a motion that we refer to the Finance Committee the assessment deferral program, and perhaps will identify certain grant funds, federal funds, that could be available to back up, just like the community development funds. So that would be my motion, please.
I'd second that. Okay.
Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, we'll move on to item 19, petition certification, proposed underground assessment district, numbers 111 and number 116B.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have to announce I have a conflict. For business purposes, I'm involved in a telecommunications company. And I also just want to reiterate that applies to item eight as well. I don't think I was specific enough in that last statement.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, at the advice of council, because I have a stockholder conflict with AT&amp;T, I'm going to recuse myself as well.
Okay. Well, we'll see you guys later. Okay, staff?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Mark Vkojevich, a city engineer, Deputy Public Works Director, have a very brief presentation for you regarding these two proposed underground assessment districts. Along the Balboa Peninsula, there are residents have come forward in two separate areas, Districts 111 and 116B, which are immediately adjacent to our Balboa Boulevard, what I would call the city undergrounding project along the major corridor, Balboa Boulevard. It's called the 28 Project. And they've come in, and they've been asking to underground as well, too. This area between 31st and 23rd Street, you can see in the light blue color, and then you can see the pink, which is the city's Balboa Boulevard undergrounding project. And then towards the west, between 47th and 45th Street, you can see the yellow. On both sides of Balboa Boulevard have also come forward, and their district has been called 116B. The green, right to the, above that, is a district that the city just approved for petitioning just recently, last month. And now these two new districts have come forward. A couple special considerations we're asking City Council to consider on this is with regard to the petition certification process. The residents have met the legally, legal threshold of 50% property ownership for the petitions, but we're unable to reach our policy and practice of 60%. However, there are some extenuating circumstances here that we want to bring to your attention, and it mainly revolves around Balboa Boulevard. Balboa Boulevard, being a city project, being run as a 28 Project, is on hold at this point. We don't know if residents are in or out, and it's a complicated design for Edison because of the end conditions, where you have poles that come up to the alley on Balboa Boulevard, and the decisions that need to be made with that. And so we're recommending that this move forward as a district. What it provides, if it does move forward, it provides cost savings to the city's 28 Project, as well as a lot of cost savings to those residential districts as well, too. And regardless of the outcome, once you host a vote, it gives a determination of what Edison and the city can do for Balboa Boulevard undergrounding, too. And it also will minimize the risk, using the city's method of voting quickly on these. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, seeing no requests to speak, Councilmember Piotr.
Sorry about that. Mark, the 50% threshold is the state threshold. We've got this situation because of the two concurrent projects. Could you explain how, in our revised process, the upfront cost and the risk to the city is a whole lot less than it used to be?
Sure. So as part of the vote, the traditional process was, is once a boundary was formed, we would then pay Edison and the utility companies a lot of money to go design that undergrounding, and then come back to us with costs, and then we would go and do a vote. So in certain cases, you'd spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of design work in somewhere in 18 to 24 months' worth of time. In this process that we're using, this alternate method, we're taking cost estimates that have been developed by Edison and by city staff and by the city's consultants, to take those numbers and put it into an assessment engineer's report for a very small amount of money, or not small, but, you know, a lot less, and then go to a vote. So the vote is based on a cost estimate, and then we get a thumbs up or thumbs down indication from the community, do they support it or not. And then the city, if they do, the city's out a lot less money.
So the estimate still prorates it. We hire an assessment engineer. He prorates it per parcel based on the benefit, just like they would any other district. But we're not waiting literally a year, year and a half for Edison to design it and then go out and hard-bit it and come back with a number that they can live with, and then we go to the district with that. We're basically going with the estimate on preliminary engineering, which we have pretty good engineering in this case, because we're doing the 28 Project right there, next to this 20B proposal. So the risk is lower, and it's in conjunction with the city project. So I really am in support of lowering our threshold because of these extenuating circumstances. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
I support what Councilman Piotr just said. And further to add to that, as I understand, Mark, the lower risk, if we were to accept the below 60% petition signing, is the last council approved the engineering funds. So the engineering that has been moving forward to determine the total cost, the city funds have already been expended, correct?
That's correct. The assessment engineering work and report have already been completed and expended.
So a couple comments, just to restate what we're dealing with. While the city policy, 60% signatures on an initiative petition, on an assessment petition, the fund is really designed to protect the city, to make sure that the support, there's margin for support when that ultimate vote takes place, sometimes two years later. In this particular case, we have a solid, I understand, a solid 51%, 52% of the property owners. These two districts are heavily non-owner occupied, but the property owners who have agreed that they will be there for the full, final vote, they support the initiative now, and they would be supportive. So the majority vote that will be required at the time of that final vote is virtually assured by the statements that we've received and the commitments of the residents who've been working hard to get to this point. Is that correct as well?
Well, I would probably say, instead of virtually assured, I would probably say a high probability of success.
Okay, I agree. High probability, yes. Nothing's assured, but there's a higher, high probability. We've mitigated the risk. The costs have been spent. The engineering estimates are pretty solid, so people are supportive of their estimate of their obligation. We'll go to a vote. When would you expect we would go to a vote? If we were to approve this tonight?
Yeah, so we would bring this back to City Council to initiate and set the public hearing date, and the vote would be somewhere in January, possibly February.
So, which would give greater weight to that probability estimate that that majority vote can, high probability, will be secured.
Yes, that's correct.
So I am supportive as well to support this effort to go forward, to let these two districts, because another point is, the 28 now is held hostage, because we do not have those street-end commitments by the residents. So the 28 Project is important to the city, the Balboa Boulevard portion of it, and right now, that's up in the air until we get the commitment of the residents. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And we'll never have this opportunity again. We've got Edison's attention, telephone company attention. We're ready to go, just as we move down this path.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Petros.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that you haven't yet opened the public hearing, but if it does color anybody's desire to want to get up and speak, I will move the staff action at this time.
Oh, second.
Okay. So if anyone feels absolutely compelled to get up and speak, please come forward now. There's always one.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, I feel compelled to get up and speak. My name is Jim Mosher. I have to admit, I haven't followed this issue as closely as I can. My vague recollection of the undergrounding 101 study session you held many months ago was that you had affirmed this idea that you needed 60% certification to protect the city. We seem now to have a new accelerated system that doesn't require that, and I'm just curious to know whether the old rules, the old system with the 60% vote, this new accelerated system, are either of these in writing anywhere, even on the city's website, so that the public knows what rules the city council is playing by at any one moment? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Craig, did you want to speak? You felt compelled also, I can see.
My name is Craig Batley, and after Jim's comments, I'd like to make a couple of other comments. First of all, I've been involved in District 111 quite a bit, and I've been one of the people that gathered a bunch of signatures. And that district is a little bit different than a lot of areas of the city. It has mostly non-owner occupied owners. And quite frankly, the investment property owners down there are more inclined to go ahead and pay to enhance their property, get rid of the telephone lines and the telephone poles, so it's a much easier sale. The difficulty has been contacting these people to get the 51% we got there, and this is almost virtually guaranteed to pass if we do a little more work on it. And obviously, there's a tremendous cost saving to the city and to go ahead with it in conjunction with the 20-a project. And I just really urge the council to go ahead and take advantage of this one opportunity. This assessment district is going to cost around $18,000. Normally, a district would might cost as much as $25,000, $28,000, so there's a considerable cost savings to all the property owners.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other speakers, I'll bring it back to council. Please vote when the screen comes up.
The motion carries 5-0 with Councilmembers Curry and Muldoon recusing themselves.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, we're going to adjourn this evening in memory of Councilmember Curry's father. Councilmember Curry?
Yesterday, my father, Leslie Curry, went to be with the Lord. Dad was 92, and Dad died peacefully in his sleep. His ancestors came to America through Jamestown before the pilgrims. They migrated across America through Georgia and Kentucky. Dad grew up in rural Texas. During the Depression, he worked on building trails in the Arizona National Parks with the Civilian Conservation Corps. And when World War II broke out, his poor eyesight kept him out of the service, but he hitchhiked to California to get a job in the construction industry. For the next 48 years, he was involved in building our ports, highways, the El Toro Air Base and water systems. And when I say build, he was not the architect or the contractor. He literally built them with his own hands, as a concrete dispatcher and sometimes truck driver. His handiwork is visible today throughout Southern California. A lifetime operating in A lifetime operating engineer, he built a great life for his wife and sons. He was easygoing, utterly dependable, and kind of spirit. Most importantly, he was a man of great faith, and that is a legacy that he passed down to me. A wonderful father, a devoted husband, a patient and peaceful man. While all missing, thank you for adjourning tonight in his memory.
With that, we're adjourned.